The longest day of the year today. Welcome to the meeting, the June 21st meeting of this city council for the city of Oceanside. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order and welcome you to Oceanside on the first day of summer, summer solstice, longest day. From here on, hopefully, we're going to have sunny, sunny days in Oceanside. Can we please have role?
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Keim.
Here.
Councilmember Joyce.
Present.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you. Please rise for the invocation. And today we have Pastor Mike Openshaw from Lighthouse Christian Church.
All right. Thank you. On behalf of Lighthouse Christian Church, it's an honor to lead us in prayer. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for another beautiful day of life, for the sunshine, for the many blessings you continue to pour down upon us. May we be truly thankful and grateful for your many blessings. We thank you for these servants who have come tonight to lead and to guide. May you give them wisdom in their decisions to do what is in the best interest of this community. Lord, for all who speak, may they speak with integrity and with respect for one another, and may your will be done here tonight. Lord, we thank you again for life itself. May we continue to look to you for guidance, for protection. May you continue to bless us. We pray in the name of Jesus. We pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Mike. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America, one nation under God, equal and just. Thank you. You may be seated. And actually, I'm going to first call Dewey Half. Yes, we do. Pet of the month. Come on up.
Hi, everybody. Can you all hear me? Yes. See my head? Try to do this at the same time, multitask. Hi, everybody. My name is Kelly. I'm from the San Diego Humane Society's Oceanside campus. This here is Spotify. Oh, oh. What's that? No, it's not Spot. It's Spotify. And this is a girl. She's about four months old. She came into our Oceanside campus on, oh, sorry, I'm kind of loud anyway. She came into our Oceanside campus on May 30th as an owner's surrender, so we are obviously looking for a home for her. Her adoption fee is $200. That comes with her already spayed. She's already microchipped. She's already vaccinated, up to date with her vaccines, a free veterinary exam within seven, the first seven days. We have a list of veterinarians, free bag of dog food, and free 30-day pet insurance here from the San Diego Humane Society. She's just one of the lovely animals that we have available for adoption. Right now, Saturday and Sunday, we have a promo running for all adult cats and dogs. That's anybody that's seven months and older. The adoption fee is $20. And then also until July 2nd, we have another promo where if you adopt any kitten, cat, or rabbit, the buddy is free. So the buddy is waived. And also, we know that the Fourth of July is coming up. As you may all know, the Fourth of July is one of the busiest times for the shelter. So we're running a promo right now where if anybody comes in and gets a microchip for their pet, it's free until the 2nd of July. So make an appointment online. You can go to any one of our campuses to make that appointment, and it's at sdhumane.org. Go to vaccines, microchip, make an appointment, get it done. That way, if your animal does come into the shelter, let's hope not, let's hope they're safe at home, that they're able to be reunited in the home. So yes, thank you, everybody. Come adopt, come adopt. We're full of dogs, we're full of cats, we're full of rabbits, we're full of everything. So we would really appreciate it. Or just spread the word. If you can't adopt, spread the word, volunteer, do whatever you can, because we're trying to do the good for these beautiful beings that need our help. So thank you and appreciate you all.
This is a beautiful, beautiful puppy, guys. She's a wonderful puppy. She can be a mascot. Now, I understand we already have a mascot. We just got a new mascot for Parks and Rec, but I don't know, maybe we need a second mascot for Parks and Rec. Who knows? You know, maybe we could talk a little bit about that. But thank you so much for coming and reminding us that if you really want to have a pet, come on down to the Humane Society here in Oceanside, where you have huge selection of wonderful, loving pets to just make you just happy every day. Thank you so much. Oh, looks like John, maybe? Here we go. I don't know. Wants to play, okay?
He does.
Yeah, she wants to play. All right. Well, thank you so much. Thank you. Well, our next piece here is a proclamation in honor of July. What is July month? That's next, next month coming up. And since we're not going to be meeting today, meeting next month as a city council, we decided to go ahead and put this on the agenda for today, and that is July Parks and Recreation Month 2023. And this is a national thing. Come on down. We've got city staff, Parks and Rec, Public Works, and also we have Lisa Russell, who is the chair for Parks and Rec Commission. And as promised, we have a new mascot. Okay? Here we go. Okay, you know, first person shout out, what do you think our mascot is?
Pelican.
Okay, got it. You got the pelican, right? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, mascot. How are you? No speak? No? Okay. All right. But basically, this is someone who, well, yeah, you know, pets are, you know, people, right? Animals are people, right? So this is someone that's going to be, you're going to be seen throughout, beginning this summer, right, for Parks and Rec. So thank you very much for being here, mascot. And we've got a proclamation in honor of July Parks and Recreation Month, where community grows. Whereas Parks and Recreation are an integral part of communities throughout our country, including the city of Oceanside. And whereas Parks and Recreation promote health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks. And whereas Parks and Recreation promote time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourage physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas Parks and Recreation are a leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, and education. And whereas park and recreation programming and education activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development. And whereas Parks and Recreation increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas Parks and Recreation are essential and adaptable infrastructure that make our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther Sanchez, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim the month of July as July Parks and Recreation Month 2023 in the city of Oceanside, and encourage all residents and visitors to enjoy Oceanside's parks and recreation programs, from surfing and beach soccer on our beaches, to pickleball at Melba Bishop Park, and many places in between, including our senior centers, swimming pools, ball fields, skate parks, and concerts in the park, where all of our communities continue to grow in health and well-being. Congratulations. Thank you so much for all you do, our city, city staff here. And I'm going to go ahead and give this proclamation to Lisa.
Oh, me?
Yes. She, okay, so we do have a very, very active Parks and Rec Commission. And these are folks, and you, we have like, something like, was it 14 commissions, 15, 14, 15 commissions in the city of Oceanside. And this is an opportunity for citizens to get involved and to really help make sure that all the things that our citizens want to have here in Oceanside are things that we can have access to equitably. So Lisa, would you like to say something?
I will.
Oh, quick photo, okay.
I think we want to take a photo.
Pay no attention to the boot, okay? No attention to the boot.
Okay, there you go. I'm Lisa Russell. I'm the chair for the Parks and Rec Commission. I'm a proud city long lifer here. I want to invite you all to look at our website. I want to thank the city of Oceanside, Parks and Recreation, for bringing so many programs for youth. Check it out. Check out our pools, check out our parks, check out our Park One pickleball. Let's do pickleball. I love pickleball, Melba Bishop, but we're hoping for some more courts at Park One. And I'd like to thank all these city people up here for the Parks Recreation. I thank them. Pass it down. Pass it down. Thank you.
Patrick Young with Special Events, and I just want to thank our whole team. They're out there working tirelessly, especially this was Day Camp Week, where the majority of our staff are serving the youth at our four different centers. And I really want to say thank you to our Public Works Department and Parks for keeping all of our facilities and our beaches clean during this heavily used time. So I just want to say thank you to the staff and other departments that have always really supported Parks and Recreation. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Hamid Bahaduri, Public Works Director. Our Parks and Rec Director Manny could not be here, so he had the choice between me saying a few words on behalf of his department or Charlie the Brown Pelican. And Charlie won, so I say a few words. Thank you again for the proclamation and recognition. Our parks and programs, recreational programs are very robust and active. We have about four, not about, we have 46 parks and recreational facilities that we maintain throughout the city, including Senior Center and the Aquatic Center. We have 12 to 13 members of our Public Works Department who maintain those facilities. And the Parks Department has 23 full-time staff, which are augmented by seasonal employees about this time of the year, up to about 150. So it's quite an operation, joint operation between our two departments, and thank you again for the proclamation and recognition.
Hello, I'm Amanda Roswell, and I am in charge of the aquatics for Parks and Recreation. We have three pools and a surf camp that we run during the summertime. And like Patrick said, this has been our first week of camp, and then our Learn Swim program is going full stream at Marshall Street and the Wagner Aquatic Center. Our Brook Street Swim Center is under renovations currently, but we look forward to having as many patrons at our facilities as possible.
Anybody else? No?
I got one shameless plug.
Okay.
One shameless plug here. We're getting ready for the 3rd of July. That's right, the 3rd of July over at the SoCal Soccer Field. We're going to have a great fireworks show. Gates open at 4:00. We'd love to see all of you. Thank you.
Right, thank you. And I believe Gone Blonde is going to be playing? Yes, so come on down. It's, it's, we're going to be celebrating the city's 135th birthday on July 3rd. So come on, come on over to El Corazon. So thank you very much. Thank you to everyone who helps make the city of Oceanside that much better by, by being able to support all of our parks and recreation programs, as well as the public. Thank you so much. Couldn't do it without your support. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Council met at 3:30 to discuss item one, conference with labor negotiator on the status of negotiations with respect to a side letter involving the OCEA. There's no reportable action under the Brown Act.
Thank you. Next are consent calendar items, items three through 36. Staff has removed item number 29. Is there a motion to approve the balance? There's a motion to approve?
We do have public that pulled one of the items.
Okay, which, which one is that?
Number 11.
Number 11, okay. Any others that are being requested to be pulled?
28 and 33.
I'll second the motion to approve the balance.
All right, so there's a motion and second for the balance. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Number 11 is approval of an increase to an existing purchase order with Sunbelt Rentals in the amount of $76,232 for a revised total of $107,232 for maintenance and repair equipment rentals for the Public Works Department. Approval of an increase to an existing purchase order and Rawlings Electric in the amount of $13,046 for generator equipment rental. Appropriation of $89,278 from the General Fund. Peer assigned maintenance and authorization for the Financial Services Director or designee to execute the purchase order. Who pulled this?
A member of the public, Sandra Martinez.
Ms. Martinez, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I was looking over this item, and I was looking at a bunch of other items as well. And I noticed in this one, you're going from, you're going to increase the funds from $76,000 to $107,000, as well as for Rawlings Electric going up $13,000. I'm looking at that, and that's a pretty large percentage of an increase. And this is a pattern that seems to be existing throughout the budget and the addendums that go on for all the things that are financed. A couple weeks ago, I talked about how the budget was geared at 3.5 using the CPI index, and all your budgeting was based on that. Clearly, today's agenda, the entire consent calendar, for the most part, signifies that 3.5 CPI as your budgeting number is really inadequate. We have anything from 10% to 15% to 20% on almost every single item that goes on here. For example, on number 13, which is the ATP, general engineering, that's an additional $1.2 million out of a, up to a $14 million contract. So again, that's well over 3.5% increase, for those of you that understand math. The same with number 18, the same with number 19. Number 19 in particular is the pure lease agreement. That was $125,000. The increase is $75,000. So again, that's about a 70% increase, certainly not 3.5%. So I would again state that the budget was really low using a 3.5 estimate. But I think there's something else that goes with this, and I know when people come in with proposals, that it is standard policy to accept the lowest bid. So what I would suggest, rather than accepting the lowest bid, is that you actually, you can accept the lowest bid, but you put a limit on the amendments to additional funding. Because we've, I've seen it in the last year and a half or so that I've been attending, a little more here, a little more there, a little more there, a little more there. Everything seems to pretty much get approved, and now you're talking double what was the initial proposal. And I do not feel that that is a fiscally responsible way to run things. Inflation is part of it, but on the other hand, accepting the lowest bid and not putting a cap on what the cost can run, I believe is not good, good business practices. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Do we have staff? It looks like the purchase order allows the Public Works Department to rent equipment that the city does not have in its inventory to perform essential maintenance and repair obligations. Those are pretty critical. Staff.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, Nathan Merz, Public Works Division Manager. Item 11 is particular to emergency that we had down at the pier. 2 o'clock in the morning back in March, there was a power outage on the pier. Staff received a call. We came down to investigate, and there was an issue with the SDGNE meter basically melted. We lost power to the pier. In order to supply electrical power to the pier, we had to rent a generator. And as we worked with the contractor on cleaning up the switchgear, replacing components, we waited for SDGNE to schedule the meter reinstall, which ended up taking about a month to get on their schedule. And in this case, we have an existing purchase order with approved vendor. That's Sunbelt. We exceeded that purchase order amount, and this is a kind of a retroactive change to that purchase order to pay for that emergency work, and then also pay for the contractor to do the work. So that's essentially what this action item is tonight.
Thank you very much. No other requests to speak on this from the public? Is that correct?
None.
All right. To the council, any other questions for staff, or is there a motion?
Move approval.
There's a motion to approve. I'll go ahead and second. Let's vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 28 is next, is that correct?
23 and 28, I believe, are the next. 28? 28?
28, okay. And this is approval amendment two to the property use agreement with the San Diego Rescue Mission revising the construction budget for the Oceanside Navigation Center. Adoption of a resolution authorizing participation and acceptance of funds for the Economic Development Initiative Committee project funding from the U.S. Department of HUD. Acceptance of funds in the amount of $2.25 million from HUD, and appropriation of such funds to the Neighborhood Services Department Navigation Center project. And authorization for the city manager or designee to execute all agreements and documents necessary for acceptance of the funds and implementation of the agreement. Councilmember Joyce?
I just had a question about, what was the, what were the major, major changes to require this amendment?
Very, very honorable mayor, city council. Good evening. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Sa Ramon. I am with the Neighborhood Service Department. So to ask, answer the question, you're asking what major work was done or is requiring this amendment, the second amendment? So I'd be happy to answer that. There are a few things, but some of the major work was the asphalt. That's, that is a big, major project that was not anticipated, as well as plumbing. There's a lot of excavating that was done. And then there was also several other miscellaneous jobs that were not necessarily part of the original scope or the amendment, but because of the changes, the original plan was no longer, it was obsolete compared to what we're doing now.
Okay.
In addition to that, the cost of materials and work continues to be higher than we anticipated from the original scope.
Does this change anything else about the agreement we have with the Rescue Mission?
Absolutely not.
No. Do we know when they're scheduled to open?
We do, and I want to knock on wood and make sure that I don't.
It's not a best kept secret, is it?
No. So at this point, it's been announced by San Diego Rescue Mission. The anticipated move-in date is going to be between 17th and 21st. We just know that it's going to be that sometime that week.
Of July.
Of July, sorry.
Okay, so we're looking at getting in, in the building this July. I know it's a long anticipated, so I just wanted to give us a chance to talk through the updates. And just to remind everybody, what's the goal of their work at the Rescue Mission property?
The goal of San Diego Rescue Mission?
Yeah, just, just real quick.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, the goal is to create the first step for our residents experiencing homelessness. It's 30 days of developing a housing plan. And when I say housing plan, it mean anything like getting detox, going to their one-year program, or finding housing through our several different housing programs that we offer through the Housing Network.
Okay. Thank you.
I do want to just add, I'm, I'm so very, very happy that Congressman Mike Levin was able to help us get the $2.25 million. There were cost overruns, had a lot to do with just, just really ancient kind of onsite stuff like asbestos removal and things like that, that are very costly. But we have to make sure that it is, you know, the health and safety of all the individuals that are going to be going through there. So I'm going to go ahead and move approval. Is there a second? Okay, there's a motion and second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Item number 33 is approval of the updated Downtown Advisory Committee bylaws and fiscal years 2023, 2024, and 2024, 2025 biennial work plan. And this is Councilmember Joyce.
Thank you. As the representative of the downtown area, I just had some questions about the downtown advisory bylaws and the work plan. So I wanted to ask if staff could just give us an idea about what the DAC does.
Good evening, members of the city council. Councilmember Joyce, to answer your question, the Downtown Advisory Committee is just that they make recommendations to the city council on policy, documents, and/or development plans that would be considered by the Community Development Commission, which this body sits as. It's a vestige of the Redevelopment Agency days.
What, what is the membership makeup of this group that sees all of the first plans that kind of come before the Downtown Advisory Committee?
I'm sorry.
Is there a specific makeup of this committee?
There is. It's a committee made up of members of the public representing various avenues and activities in downtown. Also has a member of the Planning Commission on there, a member of the Development Commission, I believe, is on, sits, also sits on the Downtown Advisory Committee.
Has this always had this makeup, or was this revised recently to have new members from different organizations? I just see that there are, it's a nine-member committee, and there are representatives specifically from the Oceanside Chamber, the Main Street Oceanside. One member needs to be a business owner of the city of Oceanside. One needs to be a planning commissioner, a tourism industry member, economic development, and then a real estate profession. Has this, has it been this way for a long time? Is this how it started?
It is, Councilmember Joyce, it's my understanding that the composition of the Downtown Advisory Committee hasn't changed, at least it hasn't changed in the nine years that I've been here at the city of Oceanside.
Okay. So I have a couple of just kind of questions or concerns about this makeup that makes recommendations on the development that happens to hear downtown. One is that I again see that kind of anti-renter bias, where we have like a seat save for a homeowner downtown, but we have a ton of residents down here that aren't homeowners. They're renters, they're longtime renters of our city. And we do have one at-large seat, but that's one out of the nine. And also, you know, I hear a lot of general concern about downtown, whether it be thinking or feeling like it's being overdeveloped, losing a sense of belonging in the downtown. And with the composition of this group, I just worry that we're losing the voices of the general public within this advisory committee. So I would like to suggest that we return it to the DAC to add two more seats for community at-large seats, so that the community at large can have a voice on the, the very beginning of the process of seeing our downtown developed.
Okay, so you would want to, I think there are, are there two, there are no alternate positions, is that correct? So it's just nine member? So it would be adding two additional people that would be at-large?
Yes.
Or, or, or living in the coastal zone, which...
I think, so the downtown area, well, like, yes, living there gives you a sense of what's happening on a day-to-day. It really is a space that we all have a sense of belonging, and like, it is the city's place. So I wouldn't want to just be the downtown.
At-large, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, two more at-large seats.
Councilmember Robinson?
I just wanted to speak to the renter part. It says owner/occupant, which an occupant could be a renter, so it doesn't preclude a renter from being that selected.
So there's a motion to add two people to this committee, that they be at-large. I'll go ahead and second it. I think having more discussion and kind of airing out all these, whatever, issues... I think having more discussion and kind of airing out all these whatever issues at that early stage is, is pretty important. This, the purpose of the committee, per the bylaws, is to advise the Community Development Commission, that is us, and our staff, or I guess just us, and its staff has actually been lined out, regarding proposed development regulations and entitlements in the downtown district formerly known as the redevelopment project area. So this is, so some of the things have been updated in terms of language because we no longer have redevelopment, so that's really nice. And so I understand that Councilmember Joyce would like to see two more people added to this group. Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you. Sorry, who's the liaison for this group?
There is none.
There is, we don't have one?
Do you want to add a liaison?
No. I'm not looking for work.
Okay.
I'm just curious, has the committee itself had any problems? Do we know if they're making a request to add any more people to the, it just seems like the bigger you make a committee, the harder it is to get things done sometimes. So I'm not trying to be argumentative, or do I have a dog in the hunt? It just, it just seems like some of these committees get really big, and I don't know.
Have there ever been any issues with meeting a quorum?
Mayor Sanchez, members of the City Council, there has been issues with meeting quorums. The larger the body gets, the more difficult it is to have a quorum, because it has to be a quorum of the entire membership, which would be now growing to 11 as opposed to nine. So it does become a little more difficult at times, given the time of day when this committee meets.
And has it ever been difficult to get specific people who are named, described, onto this committee? Business owner within the city of Oceanside, I guess planning commissioner, someone from the planning commission. So has there ever been any difficulty? No, right?
To my knowledge, Mayor Sanchez, there has not. The City Council appoints the membership of the Downtown Advisory Committee.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keim.
I'm also concerned when you make it bigger, it gets a little more unwieldy. I think if, a good way to work this out would just be to work with the mayor and make sure that you can see who you think is appropriate to be on it and get the right people appointed. We'd be more efficient and still solve your problem.
Well, I mean, we don't.
Councilmember Joyce?
I apologize. Thank you, Mayor. We don't appoint the planning, there's several members of here that we don't appoint, and then there's several members that are already restricted. Not to mention that it meets at 9:00 a.m. That would be a challenge for most people who are at-large to join the meeting. Is there a way that we could get the meeting moved to a time that's more friendly to those of us that have jobs?
Councilmember Joyce, it would take a revision to the bylaws to make, to change the meeting time. That would, we would advise that that would be a recommendation from the committee itself on when they meet, and then it would have to come back to this body for adoption of those amended bylaws.
Okay, Councilmember Weiss?
Thank you. I'm going to support keeping it at nine, but I understand Councilmember Joyce's issue, and I'd be willing to go to two community at-large members and drop the very last one, that someone has to be qualified in real estate architecture, real estate development, real estate land use law. I mean, I think, to me, it makes more sense to get rid of people who are in that particular business. We already got specific other ones, and just make two members at large.
Well, that certainly sounds like a good compromise there. So is that something that you would want to accept?
Yeah, I will accept the amendment, yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion to make the last member described in section 2.1 composition under A to be at-large, so that we now would have two members from the community at-large. Okay?
Mayor, can I ask a clarifying? So there presumably is a member of the DAC who serves in that role right now, who has a term in that last category, and presumably that person would continue to serve out their term, and the at-large would become effective when that term is finished?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I believe that's Member Haas.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, there's, well, would be at-large, still qualify.
Sure.
Right. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Okay, so let's go to advanced written requests to reserve time to speak. First person up is Robert Cording on the ramp at Oceanside Pier.
Thank you very much. My name's Robert Cording. I'm a film producer and homeowner in North County. I spend quite a bit of time down at Oceanside Pier, and it's my interest to bring a situation which many of us are aware of to our attention, and that's skateboarding on the ramp at Oceanside Pier. Skateboarders with speeds in excess of 30 miles an hour are coming down the ramp, they're cutting across the beach road, and if they lose control, they're going to end up hitting a pedestrian, in many cases, which I have seen, hitting a vendor stand or running all the way through to Tin Fish Restaurant. It's really a very, very serious situation. And we all know about it, it's been happening for years, but firsthand, I've been able to see really what has happened. And I wanted to read one story of a gentleman that I just found out that this had happened just about two weeks ago. His name is Johnny Alcaraz, and he's a chef and security guard at Kalima Restaurant. And so I'll read it to make it go a little bit faster. On September 19 last year, 2022, Johnny Alcaraz, a chef at Kalima's Mexican restaurant on Pierview Way in Oceanside, was assisting a friend and food vendor for an event near the base of the Oceanside Pier ramp. As it had become dark at about 8:00 p.m., a skateboarder coming down the ramp with an estimated speed of 25 to 30 miles an hour swerved across the area of the base of the ramp, delighted full force with Johnny as he was standing next to the food cart. The impact from the skateboarder threw Johnny onto the concrete pavement, where he sustained a broken right hip, a broken left arm, and a broken finger. Paramedics arrived immediately with emergency vehicles, and he was strapped onto a gurney and rushed to the hospital. Johnny underwent a major hip surgery. The damage to his hip was extensive and required the use of steel rod prosthesis implanted at the hip joint connecting the femur bone to the hip. The broken left arm was set in a cast, and a broken finger was taped and bandaged. Johnny's recovery from the surgery has been very slow. It has been 10 months since the skateboarding incident at the Oceanside Pier ramp, and Johnny still feels pain and hardly walk. His life has virtually been changed. Johnny and his family have suffered through all of this. In dealing with the impact it has had on his work as a chef at the restaurant, he's considering a request for permanent disability. The tragic part of Johnny's story is that this accident was completely avoidable. With safety measures and a skateboard-proof ramp at the pier, future accidents with major injuries and possible death can be avoided. The question is, how many more Johnnys need to be seriously injured or worse before the ramp is made completely safe from out-of-control skateboarders and bicyclists, for families, little children, vendors, tourists, and local citizens? Most of the skateboarders are from the ages of 12 to 16 or 17, and they skate the ramp as if it's a skateboard park. They don't care about the signs, they don't care about the police presence, they'll just go ahead and do it, they'll skate it with impunity. A couple of weeks ago, I went up to one of the skateboarders, and I asked him, I said, you know, it'd really be good if you didn't skate on the ramp, because it's a very dangerous situation. And he looked at me and says, what are you going to do? Call the cops? Yeah, go ahead, call the cops. If they come, they won't say anything, they won't arrest us, they'll just walk on. So it's kind of a weird situation there at the, at the, at the pier. There's no security guards there at the ramp or at the pier in case something should happen. I talked to a vendor this morning, there was an incident at the top of the pier, and he had to go with the police station to have one of the policemen go on and check it out. So it's a very serious situation. I think that the reason for my presentation tonight really is to bring again the problem there at the pier. I understand that there's a plan going on that's going to probably take another two to three years to completely make changes in the ramp and as well as the, at the pier.
Thank you, sir.
And I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the council.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Richard Newton, indicates he would like to speak on disparate treatment of Memorial Day versus Pride Month by the City of Oceanside. And Mr. Newton, before you start, I would like to add something here. That is that after the Memorial Day celebration that we had at Vance on May 29th, I did find out that there is such a month as Military Appreciation Month, which is the month of May, so I do plan on doing that for next May. We've, I've looked at the history of our city, and apparently we've never done it before, and I don't know why we wouldn't be doing that. So I'm very, very proud to say that we are going to be doing that and moving forward. Obviously, our military community is very, very important city of Oceanside. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. I'm going to touch on that, too. Honorable Mayor Sanchez, councilmembers, and the public, I would like to thank Mayor Sanchez and councilmembers Robinson, Keim, and Weiss for their attendance at the Memorial Day event at the Veterans Association of North County. As an American, I appreciate your observance of the sacrifices of veterans. Councilmember Joyce, I did not see you there, though I did look for you. We are a nation, we as a nation honor our fallen veterans with only one day of remembrance on the calendar. This seems inappropriate. From our first Continental Army to our most recent wars in Afghanistan and Iraq, those who served did their part to protect our national interests, our constitution, and our individual rights. All made sacrifices and deserve our respect and admiration. A little-known fact is that the month of May is Military Appreciation Month. Little known, because our leaders give it none of the vigor or energy they give to the following month, June, which is Gay Pride Month. You would hardly know that Military Appreciation Month exists. Let me be clear, individual liberty and the pursuit of happiness are cherished concepts in our society. Our veterans have protected and secured those for all of our citizens. People of any persuasion should be free to pursue their happiness within the constraints of avoiding public debauchery or other pertinent laws. I mean no disparagement to any individual to pursue their own interests. Just don't cram it down my throat, and don't normalize it throughout society. Having said that, why does society have Pride Month to honor gay lifestyle? We gloss over the word gay, but what does it really mean? It means preference for certain sexual acts. Pause for a moment and consider what those acts are that are being celebrated. It is absurd to celebrate this even for heterosexual acts. What lunacy has taken over our society wherein these acts are to be honored and for an entire month? The problem with Pride Month is the old expression that if you give them an inch, they take a mile. It has become advocacy for gay lifestyle. The picture you see of a nearly naked man being tied up and whipped is in a gay pride parade and is improper public debauchery. Advocates for Pride Month say it is about celebrating equality, but even on the face of it, there is no reason to give it a full month. Some might say it is about fighting oppression, but when one sees flagpoles at the U.N. that all have pride flags on it, rainbow flags on it, or topless transsexuals at the White House, or military leaders who are forced to advocate Pride Month, oppression is clearly not existent. I'd like to correct Mayor Sanchez for her comments on the June 7th meeting when she quoted the Democrat talking line about 500 anti-LGBT laws. Many of these laws are about protecting women to compete fairly in sports. Other laws are not anti-gay but anti-explicit. Florida's bill that the left calls "Don't Say Gay" prohibits sexual content that is explicit in schools for young children. A very reasonable position, but since that includes gay behavior, the left distorted what the law means to exploit it as a wedge issue, but this is a lie. And since it is not about protecting gays, it must be about grooming children, and those who criticize Florida's laws are political subversives or groomers. Democrats and Sacramento and elsewhere now push a law that gives children too young to legally enter into contracts the authority to change their socks and begin the mutilation process of their bodies against the wishes of their parents. Democrats do this to pander to leftist activists, talk about taking a mile. These children are young enough to pretend that they are airplanes by running around with their arms extended, yet surgically attaching a jet engine to them would be absurd and a heinous abuse of children. To the public, I say know who your real enemies are. If you knew what the Democrat Party stood for, you wouldn't vote Democrat. No wonder there is pushback from the public against Bud Light, Target, and others. The 95% of the population that is not LGBT is tired of having this crammed down our throats. We need to push back against Pride Month and devote no resources to it in the future. Those that come as private citizens are welcome, but must observe all laws regarding public decency. Instead, let's make June Military Appreciation Month Part II, following on the heels of May, and give veterans a well-deserved two-month honorarium. And let's actually advertise it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Ken Layton to speak on the relationship with the City of Oceanside and councilmembers.
Mayor, councilmembers, Ken Layton, speaking only for myself. The Carlsbad Chamber of Commerce is a thriving, interactive fountain of resources, helping its members with webinars and seminars on new tech and coming changes to the business climate. The Oceanside Chamber is a low-tech social group with sundowners and a board of directors that includes people who have no apparent business connections. Like the youth sports leagues where everyone gets a trophy, the Oceanside Chamber is a chance for people to pretend they matter under a pro-business banner. That's fine if it's stopped there. But when the city built the Welcome Center complex at 928 North Coast Highway 20 years ago, it gave the chamber over 3,000 square feet of free office space as long as it provided, quote, "promotion of the city and operation of the Welcome Center." Well, guess what? On April 10, 2019, the city manager assigned operation of the visitor center to visit Oceanside. The chamber hasn't operated the Welcome Center for four years, and if you ask any city staffer who knows what's up, they'll tell you that Visit Oceanside is doing all the work in marketing Oceanside to tourists and other visitors, and the chamber is doing squat. Keep in mind, Oceanside has the only Chamber of Commerce in the county that gets free rent from their city. So what exactly does the Oceanside Chamber do now, besides throwing sundowners and serving business tenants of 29 years with 30-day evictions? Well, its executive director apparently figured the best way to keep his free rent gravy train was by creating a political PAC in 2019. This way, even if the chamber doesn't really do anything, it can still get free rent. And show enough, look what happened. Ashton's PAC gave $6,000 to both councilmembers Weiss and Keim, and $2,500 to Councilman Robinson. And Mr. Ashton now has got a majority, and won't that be convenient when it comes time to re-up the chamber's free rent contract in two years? Since Visit Oceanside is now doing most of Oceanside's marketing, the chamber's new status is to be a social club that doesn't have to do anything except donate to its political enablers. A trip to the clerk's office shows that the address of the chamber's PAC is 928 North Coast Highway. I want to know who in the city says it was okay for the City of Oceanside to allow its own building to be the home of a PAC which raises money to keep specific councilmembers in office? Who is going to say this isn't right? Certainly not the City Council, which has a majority of electeds who got there with the help of the chamber. And apparently, neither the city manager or city attorney can or will speak out. But it gets worse. The Oceanside firefighters and police unions send thousands to the chamber PAC, which in effect launders their campaign money and letting the chamber do all their dirty work. Is this so bad? I live in District 3, where in 2020, Ryan Keim's side sent out three nasty hit pieces attacking his chief. his chief competitor. Does this all tie together? Gee, I guess we'll never know. I sent Scott Ashton five questions by email last week, asking him about his 30-day evictions, his free-rent status and his political activity, and he told others he's simply not going to answer questions. Since you guys are on his dime, maybe you can get some answers. But it gets even worse. Scott Ashton will send letters of support and show up to speak in favor of a developer if the developer gives him money. Please consider the $4,500 Ashton got from North River Farms and the $2,000 he got from that most hated developer, Howard Jacobs. Right on cue, Ashton shows up representing the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce backing these high-density tenements. Sadly, these developments will end up ruining Oceanside long after Ashton moves on. Is this Oceanside, California, or Hooterville, Alabama? Highly-paid staffers find nothing wrong with all this. But trust me, what you do in the dark will eventually come out in the light. Thank you very much.
Thank you. How many members do we have under item number 40?
Eleven.
Did you say 11?
Eleven.
Do you think that we can do item number 42? Yeah, okay. Let's go ahead and call item number 42, which is Request by Deputy Mayor Keim and Council Member Weiss for Discussion and Direction to Staff Regarding Towing and Impound Policies for the Sunset Market.
I'll take care of it. This is just simply came to our attention that when the Sunset Market is getting ready to operate from 2:00 on, that cars have to move to let the vendors go. And those cars are often towed to an impound yard, which costs a significant amount of money and is a serious inconvenience to someone who has that happen. Do we just like staff to revisit it and see if there's a better way of doing that? Maybe if we could tow it to a nearby lot, something that's less inconvenient to someone who makes a mistake of parking there. That's it. So we're very open to however staff wants to revisit the issue and figure out if there's a better way of doing business. So I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to do that. Thank you.
Okay, are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item?
We do not have any members of the public on this item.
Yeah, you know, I just don't know. The notices are there. This is happening every Thursday. It's not like the notices aren't really in your face about moving your car. So perhaps more signage? I don't know. But certainly, I'm willing to let staff look at it, see if there's anything more that we can do to get people to move their cars in time for Sunset Market to come in, the morning market and then also the Sunset Market. Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you. And I'm going to support it, too. I'm just curious if any staff here, if anybody knows how many a week, how many cars on average get towed? If not tonight, just I'd like to know that when it comes back. So what kind of tow rate we have?
Honorable Mayor and council members, in anticipation of the site, and we did look into that, and during the past 52-week period, there were just over 80 cars that were towed during that time, so a little bit more than one a week.
Okay.
I have the same question. Just wanted to know the scope of what we're dealing with and I guess if staff feels like they have ideas to go on or...
You know, I think notice is the best thing. I mean, towing is... I mean, I went downtown to an event. There was not the notice there. I did not know that at 6 o'clock you had to clear the street. It was a hotel and I found a parking spot downtown San Diego. When I came out, my car was gone and I thought that someone had stolen it. And so I had to... So someone from that was nearby saying, oh, no, it was a tow truck. Let me tell you the business. It's open all night. You catch a ride over to it and they release it right away to you. It is a business. And it's a way, I guess, to get people's attention, certainly got mine. But there was no notice in front of the car. It was on the other side, but I didn't see the other side. I just saw my side. So I think notice is a big... For me, notice is very important. So there's a motion and a second.
Do we expect this to come back to us or are we just going to go with staff recommendations?
Well, I would defer to the makers of the motion here, but we can either report back via memo or make a presentation back before this body.
I think an internal memo. I think staff can figure out something so it's not more punitive. It's the goal of the towing is just to open up the street. It's not to have someone pay $400 in tow fees and not have a car for a day or two. That's it. I'm sure we can figure something out.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and get started on... Oh, and I did pull item number 41, just FYI. I did pull that. There was just, you know, I got some feedback. There wasn't enough time for things to happen. So our next council meeting, which will be in August, that's when I'll be... It should be on the agenda by then. Let's go ahead and have a couple of people then. Let's see.
On item number 40?
Yes, 40.
We have 11.
We have 11 speakers on item number 40. Our first speaker is Brian, to be followed by William Allen. Is Brian here?
Can I say something? I just, I don't know. I just wanted to say something about softball, but I don't know where he is. I'm sorry.
No, you could say, you've got three minutes to say. Item's not on the agenda and we definitely don't have... What did you say?
I thought you said not on the agenda.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
My name's Brian Trichter. I'm a longtime resident years ago. I just came back because of family issues. But I played, my girls played for 10 years softball. I've played for, I won't tell you how many years. So I've been back for almost a year, but I've played a couple of times at Luceno Park. We had Martin Luther came, but they moved us there on Friday night. And I'm going to get back in that softball for the girls' community because my granddaughter is only a year and a half. So it's going to be a little while. But I just wanted, and I'm glad those parks people were here. I heard there was another meeting. I'll go to that. But if we can just look into that park a little bit more, maybe some others, too. But I've played there this past year. Excuse me, I'm not good at speaking.
Luceno Park you're talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
And it's, I'm not saying it's bad. I've been in umpire for 23 years for girls' softball, college, all that. And to me, it's bad. And I can't tell you because I'm a dare when you guys work during the day. But to me, for the past two seasons I've been at that park, I haven't seen any work done. They have something going on with the light pole now, but as the field itself, there's chunks of grass growing on the infield that are rough. The dirt needs maybe just some dirt, getting rid of the chunks. And this might be other fields, but this is where I've been playing. So just a heads up if we can, excuse me, look into that. I might even think about...
Address the condition of the park at Luceno.
Oh, appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
Excellent, I'm not good at this.
No, that's good. You're doing great.
I'm all about safety. Like I said, I've been doing this 23 years umpiring for girls. And I was told the girls play there. And I was told it's really dropped down. Years ago, we first started, it was awesome. Ms. Wanda, I forgot her last name, started the girls' softball. And I was told it's really down in numbers. And maybe that's one of the reasons because, but we play there too as adults. So if we can just look into that, maybe some other parks, I don't know what you need. But yeah, it needs some work done. They use the plastic, not plastic, they use the big mat for home plate because the dirt is probably bad underneath there. And that's dangerous, too, really, technically, because it's just the mat that they roll out and put there. So if they can work on that kind of stuff, especially that field, it would be appreciated. And the one thing real fast about the veterans, I'm a veteran. Yes, you probably need to do that, but what you have there with the wall, I'm going to put my name up so my granddaughter and her kids can see it. So I do appreciate everything you do for veterans. Thank you very... Am I done? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not good at this.
No, Brian, you did great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Oh, William Allen? One more. Hello, Mr. Allen? This is on items not on the agenda?
Mm-hmm.
You've got three minutes.
All right. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is William Allen. Born and raised right here in Oceanside. I'm known to the community as M.Dot, which is Musically Dwelling on Thoughts. Here coming up in August, about the first week of August, I'll be having my sixth annual bookbag drive. So we're going to host it right here at Buddy Todd Park. And it's going to be live music. We got jumpers for the kids. It's an actual drive, so we're going to rally backpacks for people in the community. They come in, they can drop off backpacks, as well as bring the children to come and pick up some. I'll be having drop-off boxes, donation boxes all around town. Because it's hot outside, I got the dog. I'll be having drop-off boxes around town in mom and pop stores. If you see them, you can drop pencils, paper. On July 1st, I'll be having a GoFundMe link. I have some paper. I got the actual newsletter. Newsletter of mine I will pass out, I'll leave some in the front. Please grab some. I do stuff all throughout the year. It's a way where you can interact and you can donate and help. It's a high percentage of kids that go to school without supply. And I just feel like we could do something about that. I've been doing this six years. I would like to see the council and the city be more supportive with me on this. I come up here year after year and I'm still here today. And it's not about me, it's not about you, but it's about these kids. And I would appreciate it. I could be, it could be reached, it's on the flyer, it could be reached at League of Fathers, at Outlook. Again, it's just many ways that we could do it. I'll have a link of GoFundMe and come out, so support. I just want to bring awareness to the city. I want the city to know. I have the newsletters, also email to all you guys, emails. You can take the email out, maybe share it on your social. And thank you for listening.
So the drop-off is at Buddy Todd Park? When? It's the sixth annual?
August 5th.
August 5th?
August 5th.
At Buddy Todd at what times?
We're going to do probably 11 to 4, 11 to 5, somewhere around that time. But I'll be out there at 8 o'clock.
All right. Thank you very much.
Me and my band.
And you said your name is M.Dot?
My name is Musically Dwelling on Thoughts, M.Dot. I'm the king of Oceanside.
All right.
All right.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much for your service. Okay, we are on items, public hearing items, 6 o'clock, time certain. We're going to go ahead and get started with item number 37. This is adoption of a resolution upholding Planning Commission Resolution Number 2023-P09, approving a development plan and nine conditional use permits to allow the construction of a 533,700 square-foot development project consisting of 497,900 square feet of research and development facilities and 35,800 square feet of commercial space, which is comprised of four drive-through restaurants, a gas station, convenience store, car wash and flexible retail space located at the northwest corner of Rancho del Oro Drive and Oceanside Boulevard, which is the Alcorzone OBC project. The applicant is Sudbury Development, Inc. The appellant is Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, also known as SAFER. I'd like to go ahead and open this public hearing, request disclosures from council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff, the applicant, members of the public.
Staff, applicant, public.
Staff, the applicant and the members of the public.
Thank you. Same, not the applicant, I had public and staff. Okay, do we have any correspondence and petitions, Mr. Clerk?
All the correspondence we received has been forwarded to the council prior to the meeting.
All right. So we're going to go ahead and begin with a presentation by not Shannon Vitale, senior planner.
Thank you, Mayor Sanchez and members of the city council. My name is Sergio Madera. I'm the city planner, responsible for the day-to-day activities of the planning division. I'll be giving a presentation tonight on behalf of Ms. Vitale. So tonight, the item before you tonight is a recommendation from staff to adopt the resolution upholding the Planning Commission's approval of the Alcorzone OBC project. By way of background, the city acquired the project site in 1994 as part of the overall Alcorzone holdings. In 2009, a specific plan was adopted that outlined the different land use categories and within the specific planned area. In 2016, a specific plan was amended to allow the transfer of non-residential square footage between the Village Commercial District and the Oceanside Boulevard Commercial District. This amendment made the project before you tonight feasible. To give you an idea of where the project site is located, it's, the project site's outlined in the yellow box there at the bottom right-hand corner of the slide. It's a 51.1-acre site located at the northwest corner of Oceanside Boulevard and Rancho del Oro Drive. Surrounded uses include the Senior Center, Product Center and a mixed-use development to the north, industrial uses and the Rancho del Oro Sprinter Station to the south across Oceanside Boulevard, commercial, retail and hotel uses to the east across Rancho del Oro Drive and future habitat areas within the Alcorzone specific plan to the west. Brief project description includes a development plan for just over 540,000 square feet of building space, which entails 497,000 square feet of research and development square footage, separated in three buildings, approximately 35,000 square feet of commercial buildings that entail retail uses, drive-through restaurants, a gas station with a convenience store and a car wash. There are nine conditional use permits required as each one of the proposed uses is allowable within the Oceanside Boulevard Commercial District of the Alcorzone specific plan, subject to approval of conditional use permit. Briefly, the site layout is depicted in the graphic on the screen. The three yellow buildings indicate the proposed R&amp;D buildings. The red buildings indicate the proposed commercial uses. The primary access to the project site would be from a newly signalized intersection at Oceanside Boulevard and Village Commercial Drive. Additional access is available via the existing Senior Center drive through a new roundabout that would be constructed as part of the project. With respect to the California Environmental Quality Act, in 2009, a final environmental impact report was certified by the city council. In 2019, EIR addendum was approved by the council. In 2022, a final EIR consistency checklist was provided that found that no additional environmental impacts not already identified in the final EIR and final EIR addendum were identified. No additional documentation is required pursuant to CEQA Section 15162A. And it's important to note that all prior mitigation identified in the EIR and the EIR addendum are still enforceable and part of the OBC project. As a brief reminder, the item before you tonight is based on the appeal received by the city counts or received by the city, and this is what's to be considered tonight. It's not to be, we're not opening up the project and its merits again tonight, but here we're here to consider the points of appeal that were made by the appellant and the city's responses to those points of appeal. On April 24th, 2023, the Planning Commission voted 6-1 to approve the project. And on May 3rd of this year, an appeal was filed by Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, otherwise known as SAFER. And jumping right into the appeal points, the appellant contends that the scope of the prior EIR did not cover the proposed project. In response to that assertion, the 2009 EIR and the 2019 EIR addendum analyzed potential environmental impacts associated with the project at full build-out. The updated environmental checklist indicates proposed project would not result in any additional environmental impacts that were not already identified in the previously approved environmental documents. The maximum daily emissions during construction would be equal to or lower than those assumed in 2019. The operational quality emissions would be lower than those assumed in 2019 due to lower trip generation changes incorporated into the project. A proposed project would have less than significant air quality impact to already expected impact. to already expected impacts within the Alcorzone specific plan area. And finally, the project, the proposed project would not result in any new air quality impacts or increase in severity of impacts beyond what was already identified in the previously approved environmental documents for the project site. The appellant issue number two is that additional mitigation measures are required to reduce air quality impacts. Again, operationally, emissions have been reduced due to reduction in vehicle trips. And mitigation measures provided by the appellant are actually duplicative of mitigation measures already included or are irrelevant to the proposed project. The appellant's third point is that the project had an inadequate energy analysis and renewable energy options. We can, staff contends that the project complies with the city's adopted climate action plan. No aspects of the project conflict with or obstruct renewable energy policies, and energy impacts are less than significant. As part of the climate action plan requirements, the project would be required to produce 50% of its energy demand on-site, and it's been conditioned to do so. And finally, the appellant raises the issue that a new EIR is required. The environmental checklist proposed indicated the proposed project is within the scope of the 2009 final EIR and the adopted 2019 EIR addendum. Pursuant to CEQA, a new EIR is not required. The environmental consistency checklist confirms that the proposed project is within the scope of the 2009 FEIR and the 2019 EIR addendum. With that, staff recommends that the City Council adopt a resolution upholding the Planning Commission's approval of the project. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions that the council may have. We also have, the applicant is here, as well as the appellant.
Thank you very much. So at this time, we do have, we will hear the testimony from the appellant, which is Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, also known as SAFER. So you have up to 20 minutes. You can reserve some of that time for rebuttal. So it's 20 minutes and, you know, whenever you're ready.
All right, thank you. It definitely won't be that long.
Okay.
Good evening, Council. My name is Adam Frankel. I'm here from the law firm Lozo Jury, commenting on behalf of Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility or SAFER. SAFER requests that the City Council prepare an environmental impact report for the project because the project does not qualify for review pursuant to the 2009 EIR and the 2019 addendum. The project is not within the scope of the prior environmental documents because those documents did not contemplate or analyze this project's proposed land use. The project now being considered proposes 167,100 square feet more than what was previously contemplated for the OBC district. Although the allowable development intensity will be transferred from the Village Commercial District, the 2009 EIR and 2019 addendum only analyze the impacts of set amounts of office and commercial uses. Regardless of whether the proposed research and development buildings are considered office or commercial, the new square footage exceeds the land use assumptions that were analyzed in the prior EIR and addendum. Additionally, expert environmental consulting firm SWEAP impaired the proposed project's emissions to those of the project as proposed in 2019 and found that the transfer of development intensity would lead to a 3.4% increase in construction-related volatile organic compound emissions. Air quality impacts would therefore be more severe than previously contemplated in the EIR and addendum, and the city cannot rely on those documents for approval of this project. SAFER therefore respectfully requests that the City Council not approve this project and instead direct staff to prepare a tiered EIR for this project, which tiers from the 2009 EIR. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You have 18 minutes 11 seconds left. Okay. So at this time, we are able to hear from the applicant, and this would be Sudbury Development. Do we have Representative?
Good evening. My name is Colton Sudbury. Sudbury Properties is a project applicant. And we're real excited to get this project moving forward. As many of you know, we've been working on the Alcorzone master plan for many years, and this is our second-to-last phase. It's our largest phase of the project. We are proposing exactly what is called for in the specific plan and the CEQA documents and what the community groups wanted, friends of Alcorzone, and what council and staff has said they've wanted all along, which are high-paying jobs and some mixed-use retails, in addition to the residential we've already entered construction on. I'm not going to give a presentation, but we have a short one for some others in our office that can give up here and really, we're really here to answer questions. Anybody has them for us? And so with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Sophia Mitchell to talk a little bit about this a little.
Good evening. My name is Sophia Mitchell, and I was part of the team that prepared the environmental checklist for the project. I'll be providing a brief background on the CEQA history of the Alcorzone project, briefly describe the final EIR consistency review checklist that was prepared, as well as the air quality memorandum. It's important to note that the Alcorzone specific plan has evolved over time. In 2009, the specific plan was approved. In 2016, there was an amendment to allow for the transfer of non-residential development between the Village Commercial District and the Oceanside Boulevard Commercial District, with combined total of 580,000 square feet of non-residential between these two districts. In 2019, the specific plan was amended, and the city approved a tentative map and development plan to allow for 498,000 square feet of development within the OBC district. From a CEQA compliance perspective, a final EIR was certified for the original Alcorzone specific plan in 2009. The 2009 EIR concluded that the Alcorzone specific plan would have a significant and unmitigated air quality impact, as well as greenhouse gas impact, transportation and traffic, significant transportation and traffic impacts. All other impacts were mitigated to below a level of significance. In 2019, an addendum to the FEIR was prepared for a specific plan amendment. The addendum concluded that there would be no new significant impacts or an increase in the severity of impacts beyond what was already identified. For the current project, a review was conducted to determine if additional CEQA documentation would be required or if the final EIR and addendum were adequate for addressing the project. This was done systematically and carefully through the preparation of an FEIR consistency review checklist. The review checklist was prepared to determine if the project would trigger any criteria for preparation of a subsequent EIR pursuant to Section 15162A of the state CEQA guidelines. These guidelines provide three criteria for when a subsequent EIR shall be prepared for the project, and these relate to new significant effects or a substantial increase in the severity of previously identified significant effects. For the consistency review checklist, each environmental topic and threshold was carefully reviewed, and a determination was made if the proposed project would result in any new impacts or any increase in severity of impacts beyond what was already identified. The checklist concluded that the project change is not substantial. The transfer of development square footage from the Village Commercial District to the OBC district will not result in any additional increase in environmental impact that were not already identified in the EIR. It also concluded that traffic generation by the OBC project is within the ADT assumptions considered in the EIR, and in fact, it'll actually reduce trips by more than 20%. Finally, the OBC project does not result in any new environmental impacts or an increase in environmental impacts that were not already identified in the EIR or the addendum. None of the requirements for preparation of a subsequent EIR were met. And finally, I wanted to briefly touch on the air quality memorandum that was prepared for the project by LDN Consulting. Jeremy Loudon, Principal with LDN, is here if there are specific questions on the air quality modeling. The memorandum was prepared to address SAFER's comments. The analysis considered both the construction and operation of the project, and it was compared to the 2019 development plan. And it concluded that the daily construction and operational emissions would be less than what was assumed in the 2019 FEIR. In SAFER's appeal letter, additional air quality mitigation measures were recommended, and these measures were carefully reviewed and found to be duplicative and similar to the existing adopted mitigation measures that the project would already have to comply with, or they were things that were already required by the existing regulatory environment. The analysis concluded that there would be no new air quality impacts or an increase in severity of impacts beyond what was assumed in the EIR. And with that, I would like to welcome up Ryan Waterman, who will talk through some of the legal aspects of the SAFER appeal.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez, Honorable City Council Members. I won't take very much time because your City Planner did an admirable job of laying out the legal reasons why the city can proceed by approving the project and rejecting the appeal. But I wanted to point out a couple of quick things. First off, the SAFER attorney from Lozo Jury argued just a minute ago that this project, the OBC project, would build 167,000 square feet more than contemplated for the OBC district. That is false. In fact, the OBC district is planned for more square footage than the OBC project will actually construct, and that's just a blatant misrepresentation of the record. Second, in a letter that was submitted this afternoon, the SAFER attorney submitted a, call it an air quality memo from the SWEAP consultants that purports to conclude that there's a 3.4% increase in VOC emissions. That's also wrong, and it's based, it's premised on some basic fundamental errors that the SWEAP consultants made when they set up their model. First, they assume that there's a 15,000-square-foot office in the VC district, which no longer exists and is not in the OBC district plan. Second, they assume that 34,600 square feet of unoccupied mechanical mezzanine space, which will be part of the Ionis project, is actually occupied, which also inflates numbers related to emissions. And finally, they don't take into consideration how this applicant is going to implement mitigation measure AIR 16, which requires certain thresholds of equipment to be used on the job. And in this case, the applicant's going to comply with that measure by using at least 30% Tier IV, the most modern, construction equipment. In fact, they're going to use much more than that, but that's the condition that applies to this project. By omitting all of those things and getting those fundamental aspects of the OBC project wrong, that's how they get to their conclusion of an increase. If you read the air quality report prepared by Jeremy Loudon at LDN, it shows a decrease in emissions from the 2019 project. And that 2019 project was a huge reduction in emissions from what was contemplated in 2009 in the EIR before it was initially adopted and certified by the city for the Alcorzone project. In summary, the record is very complete and robust, and it concludes that the city is prohibited from, even if it wanted to, prohibited from asking for a new EIR by CEQA Guideline Section 15162. So on behalf of the applicant, I'd like to ask and urge the city to reject the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's decision to approve the project. At this point, I'd like to invite up Anthony Scuzzari, the Senior Vice President of Chemistry and Manufacturing with Ionis, to talk about its history, operations, safety protocol, and safety record.
Good evening. My name's Anthony Scuzzari. It's my pleasure to be here and speak with you. We're enthusiastic about coming up here at Oceanside and your openness to receive us. I am a 31-and-a-half-year employee of Ionis Pharmaceuticals and an over-30-year resident of North County. And I'm just going to do a quick introduction of the company. So the company was founded in 1989. We were here to start genetic medicines, create better drugs for folks who needed, who have horrible diseases. We've established a strong culture focused on patients that have intractable diseases. We've created a new technology called Anticents, which is RNA-based therapeutics. We've got four transformational medicines on the market today. A very large pipeline. We have over 800 employees total with headquarters in Carlsbad, which also includes my building, the Development Chemistry Manufacturing Site. And then we have additional offices in Boston and in Ireland. Just some quick science. So most diseases are caused by an overexpression of a protein. Your gene is how those things are transcribed in your body. Oftentimes, it will go haywire or produce more protein. So what we do is, is we make sure pieces of RNA that go in and kind of stop that message to go out so that translation can occur, the protein can't be created. And ideally, then, because oftentimes we're doing an experiment, we're not sure whether that's actually going to improve the condition or not, we're going to reduce that protein in the body and see improvement in whatever symptom or disease is taking place. And they, we've shown that works significantly for a huge number of diseases. As I said, we've got four transformational drugs. They're listed up here on the slide, so ATT amyloidosis, spinal muscular atrophy, which for Spinraza came along, was the leading cause of death. This drug is the pleasure of my lifetime to participate in the development of that drug. It literally keeps kids who would die inside of two years old living and to progress normally so the disease didn't exist. Wealiver, so it's, this is a drug that causes pancreatitis, so inflammation of your pancreas with a lot of bit of pain and hospitalization from hydrolytic steroids, and then called Saudi, a drug that was just approved for ALS by a gentle market. But behind that, we have a very large pipeline. We're focusing on two different franchises, neurological diseases, which is what this slide shows currently. There's two approved drugs, and we have 12 drugs in late-stage development for a whole variety of diseases from more ALS drugs to Alzheimer's disease, Parkinson's, Huntington's. Very enthusiastic about how they're progressing through development. The other major franchise that we're working on is cardiovascular diseases, where we've got two drugs in Phase 3, three drugs in Phase 3 currently today. So Ozorcin, again, hydrolytic steroids for both FCS, as well as just broad hydrolytic steroids, causes pancreatitis. Epletirin, which would be a more active drug from Tectady that's on the market today that helps folks who have polyneuropathy, as well as cardiomyopathy. And then Pelacarzin, which is, she have favorites, ones that most jury is to me. So this drug attacks apolipoprotein, which we're doing a proof of concepts, well, Novartis is doing a proof of concept study for a drug that we discovered that will hopefully prove that really what leads to heart attack is not hydrolytic drug, but apolipoprotein. This drug will help address that. We care about the community. The cultural statement that sits in front of my desk and I look at every day, the first one is that we know that sick people depend on us, and that's something that we live and breathe every day. We do quite a bit of local community outreach to orphan diseases. We do a SMR, a surf SMA activity every year for the last six, eight, 10 years. We bring these folks who, before we developed Spinraza, were ended up in wheelchairs. We bring them out there and bring them, allow them to get on a surfboard and be able to experience what so much, so many of us take for granted of just getting out in the ocean and being active. And we've done a number of other outreach to another, number of other orphan disease in the community and participate very broadly. But we develop, we do develop drugs. We're trying to help. And we're certainly, at the same time, not going to put people at risk. So safety is something that is very important to us. Yes, we do use chemicals to produce the compounds that will help these folks who need help. But we take that very seriously. Have a wonderful safety record. I don't want to damage or hurt any of my employees, any of their family members, my neighbors. And so safety is of the utmost importance. And we've designed the facility- And we've designed the facility that we're hoping to build in Oceanside with that in So this slide really just kind of shows the comparison between the two sites, the site we're at, at today in the 90s down in Carlsbad. It's a site that was never designed to do what we do with it today. I think we can do about 400 times what it was originally designed to do. But the problem that we've got is we've just outgrown it. We've got employees that support the manufacturing and development from a CMC perspective, chemical manufacturing control spread over four locations. It just makes it difficult for us to operate effectively. We're maxed out of office space. We literally can't get any more electricity into the building if we wanted to expand. And we've done multiple, we've modified the building I'm in six times over the last 30 years, and we just eat out everything we can out of it. But through that, we have an excellent environmental and safety track record. With the new building in mind, what we're trying to do is come up with something that's more state-of-the-art. So with the risk of spills, most of those things occur when humans get involved. So what we're trying to do is reduce those human interactions anytime there is a chemical. We're going to bring larger solvent trucks in at a time, have larger containers that they can be filled at, have that done automatically, reduce the number of times that you're actually connecting and disconnecting a hose where spills can occur. And in doing so, we'll also have less traffic because there'll be fewer, larger trucks coming in, but fewer times because the containers will be done in a manner that will support refilling at a very less frequent time period than we have today. So there's just some numbers up here of just how many trucks we have going through currently versus the production that we would see when this building is open. And obviously, we meet all of the regulations that are out there, which are significant. We've got a wonderful track record, both with the local authorities in Carlsbad as well as the APCP board for generation and boilers and the pharmaceutical line permit we need to operate. We meet all compliance. So thank you for your time and, or any questions?
Is that it? You have, okay, I guess you can't reserve any time, so. So this is time for the public input. Do we have any requests to speak? Is it rebuttal after the public comment? I'll just call it after the public comment. Are there any requests to speak from the public?
Yes, there is. There are three registered requests to speak on this item. Our first speaker is Bob Klutz, to be followed by Sandra Martinez, to be followed by Wilson Godinay.
Mr. Klutz.
Hi, I'm Bob Klutz. I'm a Southern California lifer and North County for the last three years. In regards to the R&amp;D proposal, 497,900 square feet, how much of it is this iOS company taking for the R&amp;D development? And is there other, there's three buildings, so I was wondering how much that's going to take care of it? And then I'm also here for another reason, regarding pickleball courts. Is that part of the agenda that we were able to talk about also?
That would be on items not on the agenda, and you would have time to go ahead and apply for that.
Okay, you guys ran out of time for that.
But your main question was basically, is it all, all the R&amp;D Ionis? And yes, it is.
It is, okay. Has there been any other offers or other, other companies that have offered for the R&amp;D for other, for those buildings, or is this specific to them only?
So your questions will be answered by staff at the end.
Okay, okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Sandra Martinez?
Hello, Mayor and Council Members. So this is the 51 acres we gave away for free to Sudbury for development, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Since this contract was signed back in 2009, land prices have skyrocketed. I don't think anybody would debate me on that, right? Housing prices, everything's gone up. And I still find it very difficult to believe that the developer couldn't get a 10% return on investment on land that they would have purchased for a fair amount back in 2009. But I, my understanding is the contract was written, so it only took one anonymous person to say, no, we can't make 10%, and then we were to give them the land for free. Now Esther made a really good point. Esther was part of the council at the time that the contract was signed, but she also made a point at that, at the point where we decided to give the land away for free and actually pay for escrow costs of about $20,000 out of pocket for the city. She suggested that there might be a way, because contracts always have a way to an escape, but no one pursued that. And I'm very disappointed in the board. I know, Mr. Joyce, you were not here at that time, neither were you, Mr. Robinson, but the board really should have pursued that. That's a huge loss to the city, 51 acres given away for free. I sat through the entire presentation of the numbers and how much money was going to be coming back into the community, and it doesn't any come near to what we would have made off that land had it actually been sold. I think it was a million dollars over 10 years, I'm like, in taxes. I mean, it was quite insignificant. But here we are today, because nobody took any action. I really don't think it was good for the residents here to do a giveaway like that. Listening to SAFER and the environmental impact report issue, I can tell you, things have changed since 2019 as far as the environment. I have creatures in my backyard that I've never had before because of the huge development that is going on in Oceanside. I have song sparrows. They don't hang out in backyards. No, I don't have a California gnat catcher yet, but you never know. I'm just saying, things really have changed since 2019, and it should be reevaluated. The other thing I want to add is I want to know when we're going to have a lab leak. I'm not very fond of RNA technologies, as most of you probably know. They can be used for good, or they can create a lot of problems, and I think this is really going to open up Pandora's Box if you go ahead with this. So I urge you to at least revisit the EIR. Things have changed dramatically, and I would propose that we have another company come in if you decide to go ahead. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Wilson Godinay?
Just came up to tell you, we made a mistake where we saw El Corazon on this and we signed up. So Bob, and then myself and Jamie, who, who left. So we'll re-sign up on the...
Items not on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Jamie Olson, you want to also sign up for items not on the agenda?
She left.
Oh, she left, okay. Adam Frankel is, is actually the appellant, so we'll skip over. And Richard Newton?
Honorable Mayor Sanchez, members of the council, and the public. I am concerned with this land, how it was transferred to the developer, more specifically why the city gave 51 acres to the developer for free per contract terms that were nothing short of a giveaway. Those terms stipulated that if it was predicted that the developer would not receive a projected return of at least 10 and 1/2%, the developer would get the property for free from the city. Not a reduced cost, not a change in financing over time, but free. To add insult to injury, the city had to pay thousands of dollars to close escrow to give this land away. It should also be noted that any finding of a projected ROI of less than 10 and 1/2% would trigger this, and it would be binding. And the terms surrounding that were that if only one of five analysts determined it was such that it was below 10 and 1/2%, the city would be obligated to give the land away. It didn't matter if the other four analysts disagreed with that finding. That's absurd. It also bound the city to approve the plans with no recourse going forward. I don't think any reasonable person would enter into those terms of sale in any other sort of situation. These terms would cause any reasonable person to take pause and ask, one, why were the terms of the purchase such that only one in five analysts mattered instead of a majority of analysts? Two, why did the city not agree to a sliding scale on the purchase price predicated upon the developer return so that only the minimum price discount would occur to compensate the developer for any deficit below 10 and 1/2% ROI? Three, what internal discussions occurred within Oceanside staff to justify this contract, and who were the people involved? Four, what were the personal or financial relationships that existed between the developer and his or her representatives and city staff that made or advised on this decision? Public confidence and transparency are important factors in good government. No investigation was done since these concerns were brought up in December. The public has a right to know. Please postpone this project and provide the public with clear and transparent answers before moving forward. Perhaps the contract does need to be renegotiated. This was discussed in December. Mayor Sanchez, you suggested that we look at retaining a contract lawyer to break or renegotiate the contract. The city may be owed much money from the sale of this, and that can boost other city services. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a time for the public to speak on this item, give their public input. You do not have to have signed up to speak. If you wish to speak, you can approach the podium, give your name, and you have up to, state your name, and you have up to three minutes to speak. Mr. Knott?
Mayor, Council Members, Jimmy Knott, 127 Sherry Lane. Sitting there, listening to both sides' presentation, I have a few questions. Number one, will this development take and incorporate community responsibility enhancements in economic justice for the community? And also with upgrades in support of the park? I have not heard anything from the presentation. Second, with the gas station involved, knowing the state of California is converting to an electrical system for vehicles, there is a question on what is the needs assessment of this gas station? Because what's going to take place is that there's going to be a conversion coming up, and that's going to involve rapid battery exchange systems or electrical support assessments for vehicles that is going to be replacing the gas station. So this needs assessment needs to be taken before and gas, any further gas stations in the city are taken and appointed or developed or given permission to be developed. Another situation is, what will the occupants behold to the park, i.e. the fast food store? With fast food stores, you have waste that is discarded. And I know a lot of times it's not by these stores themselves, but by the people who consume. What will this development take and provide to the community to pick up that waste and to the park, into the community? And this is a very, you know, needed thing because the city has a zero-waste goal, and I did not see that in the presentation. And finally, with the Ionis presentation, they did not take and provide for any local training cost for our Oceanside Fire Department, Police Department, or Public Citizen Volunteer SURF program, and the costs that would be involved with that, and any equipment that will be needed for any type of like aerosolizing of any type of product or leak or contaminant. And I did not hear anything about tanker trucks, what will be taken, and for the security and the public that will be involved there. We have to look at those that would be involved. This is an incomplete report. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? I don't see anyone rising. Oh, on this item? This has to do with the R&amp;D project, and, okay. So state your name, and you have up to three minutes to speak.
Okay. My name is Robert Espinoza, grandfather to Annabelle Flores, who got shot and killed. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sanchez, Council Member, Committee. While I'm here, because I see too much, well, you guys, I was next to the agenda, you know? My name was up there. You guys bupped me off and threw me in the back burner. That's what you guys do to local people, but I didn't feel too good on them. My granddaughter was born in the neighborhood, people say across the track. She adjusted to the environment, environment that a lot of you people here have never had. You could not even walk one week in her shoes, would be in that environment. One of the main things in that environment is to survive, not to get shot and killed like my grandpa did. He got shot and killed inside the playground in a tube hiding from the gang violence, but she was a victim to that.
Mr. Espinoza, this is about the project at El Corazon that has to do with research and development?
Okay.
And some other things on here.
Okay, let's go to, let's go to that Corazon. I see in Corazon, did you use a lot of, a lot of stuff to the side?
This is not about the, the park for the youth at all.
So...
If you wish to speak on that, you can speak on items not on the agenda.
Well, I think, and you need more pickleball courts at the Corazon.
That would be on items not on the agenda, pickleball courts.
So I'm at my place. Well, thank you very much for your time, and I'll be back again.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Espinoza. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? I see no one rising. I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing and ask the appellant would like to speak in rebuttal. And you have, what was it, something like?
18:11.
18 minutes, 11 seconds.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep this brief. I would just like to reiterate again the points of SAFER's appeal being that the project is not within the scope of the prior EIR because the project's proposed land use has not been contemplated or its impacts analyzed in a prior environmental document. An EIR is required because new mitigation measures are available to address the project's air quality impacts. And the project requires a tiered EIR, excuse me, because the significant and unavoidable impacts identified in the 2009 EIR and 2019 addendum will remain significant and unavoidable with implementation of this project. I also wanted to note that there was no substantial evidence presented to contradict the findings of the independent experts with consulting firm SWAP. They analyzed the project and evaluated the project based on the documents that were provided by the city and reviewed the air quality addendum in detail. And I also would add that it was mentioned that 30% of the construction equipment will be Tier IV, but there's no indication why it wouldn't be 100% of the construction equipment, which would drastically reduce the project's VOC and diesel particulate emissions. And lastly, I would just say, in regards to SEQUA Guideline Section 15162, a new EIR is required where there is evidence of new significant effects or substantial increase in severity of previously identified effects, and SAFER has clearly presented evidence of that here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Staff, do you have any other comments?
Mayor Sanchez, we don't have any additional comments at this time.
All right. I did have a quick question for the representative from Ionis. Yeah, I did, I did get a visit, Ionis in Carlsbad, as a member of the Air Pollution Control District Board of Directors. And I remember, and I didn't know that this was, project was coming to Oceanside at all. No one mentioned that to me. I thought I heard that there was chemical waste that was trucked out of, that would be trucked out of or was being trucked out. Two, is it Kansas? Was it Kansas?
It, it...
Once a month?
Approximately once a month, yes. Yeah. The chemical waste is stored in a bulk tank, and then it'll be trucked away. That's correct.
All right. Okay. Well, that's, my memory wasn't that bad.
It was not.
Okay. Thank you very much.
It's probably not once a month. I mean, it, it...
That's what I remember hearing, but...
It's probably an approximate because it depends on how much we're producing, you know, that we've...
Now, were you talking about the project in Carlsbad or the one in Oceanside at the time? Because I did not... Because I did not have any idea that it, that there was this contemplation of having this R&amp;D in Oceanside at the time that we, that I had that meeting.
So I wasn't at that meeting, Mayor, so I can't speak exactly to the context of who presented.
Because that's a smaller project over in Carlsbad. This was, this is a much larger project.
Well, yes and no. So the square footage of the building is much larger, but as far as the process equipment, the equipment that the folks who report to me use to actually make the drugs, we're moving all of the equipment up. So what we're confined with is we don't have enough office space for growth or office space to just run the equipment more frequently if needed, and.
Okay. Thank you very much. My own clock is ticking, so thank you very much. All right, to the council. Councilmember Joyce.
This is, this development is directly across the street from Sprinter Station. Is that correct?
Yes.
Councilmember Joyce, that is correct.
So is it, in what ways is this development, I guess, transit-oriented? Do we have specific requirements on developments that are that close to stations like that? So that's two questions, sorry.
Sure. Councilmember Joyce, the El Corazon specific plan does not have any specific TOD requirements. The specific plan anticipated a traditional retail development at this corner. A component of this project includes that traditional retail development, and the other component includes the R&amp;D buildings that you're, that are presented before you tonight.
Okay. So I'm disappointed. I mean, obviously, we don't have a choice to consider it in that context, but with it being so close to transit, it really should be more transit-oriented, preferably with parking management systems. Are there, are those going to be in place for the businesses?
So there is a condition, Councilmember Joyce, there is a condition of approval that encourages, let me read it so I don't speak out of turn here. So condition number 56 of the Planning Commission Resolution covers a number of TDM strategies, including but not limited to shuttle service between El Corazon and the Sprinter Station, sidewalks along all project roadways, particularly to the bus shelter and transit station, bike lanes on all major internal roadways connecting to nearby major roadways, and promotion of TDM principles such as peak hour, trip reduction, staggered work hours, ride sharing, telecommute, and the use of public transportation or other measures. There's also another condition that encourages, where is it? Here it is. Prior to building occupancy, condition number 58, the project shall establish a carpool-van pool program, including preferential parking for carpools and vanpools. Condition number 59, prior to occupancy, the project shall implement a parking fee program or a parking cash-out program for non-drive-in employees. So we've covered TDM principles throughout the approval resolution in a number of conditions. There's further conditions if you'd like me to expand on that.
The last condition that you mentioned, the cash-out or the TDM, is that required or requested?
Shall implement, so that's a requirement.
Excellent. The other two, so we know right now Ionis is planning on going into the one building. The other two buildings, we do not know the occupants, or we do know the occupants?
Councilmember Joyce, to our knowledge, it's a, they're being built speculatively, so the occupants are unknown, but maybe that's a question for the applicant to answer if they've had further negotiations or discussions with other potential users.
I'd be happy to hear from them, applicant.
There are no known occupants for the other building of this.
Okay. So for staff, will we receive another notice when occupants are selected, and will we have discretion over their occupancy or not?
Councilmember Joyce, I believe it would depend on the nature of the occupant. If it's a use that's allowed by right, this body nor any body would see that again. If it's a use that requires, as an example, a conditional use permit for potentially, you know, the storage of hazardous materials similar to Ionis, that would come back to the Planning Commission.
Okay. And then we had a question about how this development itself will help support the furtherance of developing the park spaces. Is there any connection to this development and then the development of, say, Park Site One or further park sites?
Absolutely. The additional revenue generated from the proposed drive-throughs from increased property taxes associated with the project would all go into the general fund, which would be utilized to help park future, will help pay for future park planning and development.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any questions at this time.
Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you very much. I just want to move staff's recommendation, but as I'm sitting here thinking, I was listening to what some of the folks were saying, there was a comment about safety and what this type facility does. First of all, I'm very pleased that we are getting, attracting these type of businesses into our city to be known for this type of work, that life-saving work, manufacturing of medicines, things like that. I could call the fire chief down, ask him a question, and he'd answer it, but I'm just going to answer my own question. As far as public safety goes, our fire department, they do an analysis of these developments. They have requirements for these developments, and always do, when they, they take the time to evaluate the type of products that are in there, they'll walk throughs of the building if it's a system that they don't know about. So I think any fear of safety issues on a large scale is pretty much unfounded, so I do move the item.
Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for staff. Is the land deal part of this action today?
No.
Councilmember Weiss, the answer is no.
Thank you. And kind of along the vein of what Councilmember Joyce was asking, because we did get some comments from the public in regards to not being transit-oriented, the gas station and the drive-throughs, but earlier in your presentation, you said our review is limited to the issues that were raised in the appeal. So transit-oriented is not part of the appeal, which really, we really can't take that into consideration at this point in time.
Councilmember Weiss, that's correct. The article, Zenni Code article that describes appeals and calls for review limit the council's discretion on acting on an appeal to the information contained in the appeal petition received by the city. In this case, the appeal petition did not receive or include any comments related to TOD development or TDM management.
Thank you. And I'll second the motion.
Councilmember Joyce.
Do you think maybe we should take a look at transit-oriented development and our policies around that so that we do have that chance to get ahead of new developments?
That would be for some future project?
Are the sustainable corridors planned going to include Oceanside Boulevard?
Councilmember Weiss, it would, and it would include TOD principles within the smart and sustainable corridor specific plan that's currently being prepared.
When do you see that coming forward?
Hopefully by the end of the year or early 2024.
So if that were in place today, then this project may have been designed differently?
Not necessarily, because the specific plan, as it would describe, is specific to this piece of property, and it's the regulatory document for the property.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kim, did you want to speak?
Second.
No? Okay. I usually wait till everybody's done.
I appreciate that, Mr. Kim.
I would grant the appeal. 2000, there's so much difference between 2009 and today. First of all, the city of Oceanside has adopted a climate action plan. Lots of things have changed. The idea that we would have car-centric activity here with drive-throughs and a car, a gas station with a car wash just doesn't make sense at all. So I do think that there should have been a more extensive EIR, and I think that that really is, for me, the determining factor. In terms of policy, which is not before us, you know, I would say, a good project, wrong place. This is not an industrial park. El Corazon was meant to be primarily a park for families, youth, seniors to recreate, and not an industrial park. I'm very disappointed that somehow we did not get in front of this. You know, it would be great to have this project somewhere else. I'm very concerned about the hazardous chemical, the hazardous waste, transportation once a month to Kansas. Again, another, you know, issue for me on a climate action. Why would we be encouraging, you know, transportation all the way to Kansas? Obviously, it's, you know, it's very difficult to, to store hazardous wastes, as we know with the nuclear power plant. It's at songs and trying to find somewhere to store, to get that, those canisters off the beach and to a safer place. The vision that we had, that I had, and I, you know, I look around on the council, I've been here the longest. My voyage down this road started in 1999 to fight for a park at El Corazon, get it on the ballot. It lost by what, a handful of votes? Because, you know, then Councilmember Rocky Chavez took credit for us losing because he said, well, you know, he had signs that said, save a park vote no, to establish a park here at El Corazon. We, as a council, did come together and create an El Corazon Committee that was broadly, broadly represented the interest of the community, including the business community. As we did the presentation about Parks and Recreation Month in July, parks bring tourism, parks bring economic development, parks bring so much to a community, including health and mental health, physical health, all of those things. This is the last place for us to be able to have, you know, significant park activity. The commercial was supposed to be incidental to, to be able to support the park at El Corazon, to be able to produce revenue. An R&amp;D is not revenue-producing, not for the city of Oceanside, right? You know, when, when there were references to revenue-producing, it was a commercial park, which I think, you know, I envisioned that it would be something more related to the activity at El Corazon, like, you know, a pizza place where kids could go after a game or something, you know, whatever. So to say that this is not exactly what, what I think the vision of El Corazon is, is probably, you know, things have changed a lot, but what I will say is that I do believe that there should have been an EIR. Many things changed between 2009 and today, and we've missed so, so many opportunities for ensuring that this would be a walkable community, walkable, bicycle-friendly. From the Sprinter Station, it is a difficult, you know, walk up, all the way to walk up the hill to get to the entrance. Not many people will be doing that. So how could we have created something here that would have been able to make it easier to get to El Corazon Park for people of all ages? And, you know, I guess there's, there's that vision of e-bikes everywhere, but there's going to be also visions of other modes of transportation. A lot of our kids use skateboards, you know, and regular bikes. So I would grant it. Deputy Mayor Kim, did you want to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just, I could, could you help clarify what specific issue and reason we, you're using to uphold the appeal, just so I know for, for voting purposes? Issue one, two, three, or four, and specifically in those just.
It's your turn to speak.
Okay. I'd just like some clarity before we vote, so I can make sure we're making a legal motion.
You have, you have the floor now, sir.
Okay. So I hope we can get an answer. I have a quick question for the appellant. I mean, not the appellant, I'm sorry, the applicant. So, and I don't want to speak for them, but it's my understanding the Friends of El Corazon have been generally supportive of this, of Ionis coming in here?
That's correct.
Okay.
We're developing out exactly what specific plan are required.
Okay. Thank you. That's it. Thank you. I get, we, I hear a lot, we need high-tech jobs, we need good-paying jobs, we need these, and then when these things come, we say, not here, not now, and I don't know when or where, so it does get confusing. I understand the issues with the drive-through and those, those aren't in the appeal. As Councilmember Weiss stated, we're fairly limited, and those four issues, and addressing those specifically, so I'm just trying to get a better understanding of our legal basis for upholding the appeal. That's it. I mean, we have Park Site One, this is not the last place for a park. The parks will be developed around it, and we need revenue to build that park, and doing this allows us to do that. I'll be supporting staff's resolution, upholding Planning Commission resolution.
Thank you, and I just want to say, maybe the obvious, but air quality is part of our climate action plan. Let's vote.
Sanchez, no.
Thank you. Item number 38 is adoption of a resolution upholding the Planning Commission's certification of a final environmental impact report and associated mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and approval of development plan D-21-00011, and density bonus DB-21-00005 to allow a mixed-use development consisting of 323 residential units, inclusive of 33 units reserved for very low-income households, and approximately 2,300 square feet of dedicated commercial floor area on a vacant 7.4-acre site located at the southeast corner of Melrose Drive and West Bobier Drive. And that is the Madera Melrose. The applicant is MCRT Investments LLC, and the appellant is Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, also known as Safer. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing, request disclosures from, from council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff, and we've been receiving a series of letters from attorneys.
Same for me. Staff.
Staff and emails.
Staff and applicant.
Staff and emails from the appellant.
Okay. Mr. Varral, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
Well, the correspondence we received has been forwarded to council prior to the meeting.
Thank you. So we're going to go ahead and begin with a presentation by Mr. Sergio Madera, our city planner.
Thank you again, Mayor Sanchez, and members of the city council. Tonight, you're being asked to consider an appeal of the Madera Melrose Mixies Project. Staff is recommending that the city council uphold the Planning Commission's approval, certification of the project final environmental impact report and associated mitigation monitoring program, and approval of a development plan and density bonus project for the Mixies Project, known as Madera Melrose. The project sites located at the southeast corner of Melrose Drive and West Bobier Drive is depicted in red on the graphic on the screen. Surrounding uses include multi- and single-family residential uses to the north, the Sprinter Rail Line to the south, single-family residential, and the city of Vista to the east, a service station, and the Melrose Sprinter Station to the west across Melrose Drive. The Mixies Development Plan consists of a 323-unit apartment project and approximately 2,300, 2,400 square feet of ground-level commercial space. The density bonus application allows a 50% increase in the otherwise density cap for the project site and return for reserving 15% of the base density units for very low-income households. The applicant is requesting waivers of development standards with respect to increased floor area ratio, allowable building heights, retaining wall heights, reduced front yard setbacks, width of parking stalls adjacent structural columns, and non-plantable retaining walls. width of parking stalls adjacent structural columns, and non-plantable retaining walls. The project is entitled to three concessions, but they are not requesting any concessions at this time. This graphic depicts what the project may look like at the intersection of Sports Parkway and West Bobier Drive. It's very modern design, and it also depicts the proposed ground floor retail space there at that intersection. Again, tonight, the City Council's discretion is limited to those points raised in the appeal filed with the city. On April 10th, the Planning Commission unanimously approved the project by a 7-0 vote, and on April 20th of this year, we received an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval from And let me take a moment to take this opportunity to ask for the City Council for their patience as we go through each of the 13, there's 13 appeal points with this project. The appeal is based on very technical issues regarding the EIR prepared for the project, and it's important for staff to address each point in detail for administrative record. Appeal point number one, the appellant contends that the EIR is finding that the project's impact on human health is less than significant and is not supported by substantial evidence. City's response is that the project-related toxic air contaminants would only be present during construction phase and would cease once the project becomes operational. Vehicle emissions associated with the operational project would not include diesel particulate matter, and the project would not result in any new stationary sources of emissions. Appeal point number two, the appellant utilized a screening model known as AirScreen to evaluate health risk impacts from diesel emissions during operation. Use of this model is not recommended for the proposed project as it is considered less reliable than the model used for the project for the various reasons identified here on the screen. Specific reasons are that there's, AirScreen has a simplified algorithm, has limited input options, simplified meteorological data, limited regulatory acceptance, advanced modeling techniques, the AirMod has advanced modeling techniques, which was utilized for the project, site-specific meteorological data, regulatory acceptance, continuous development, and sensitivity of analysis. Appeal point number three is the appellant claims that the EIR fails to implement enforceable mitigation measures to reduce the project's GHG impacts. The final EIR found that impacts related to GHG emissions as a result of the project implementation are less than significant. As outlined in the air quality and GHG emissions technical report, the project relies on the Climate Action Plan consistency checklist to make these findings. The CAP checklist includes project features such as onsite renewable energy supply, EV charging facilities, and compliance with the urban forestry requirements that cannot be modified as the project is consistent with, in compliance with the CAP, new mitigation is required. Appeal point number four, the appellant claims that the EIR fails to implement enforceable mitigation measures to reduce the project's GHG impact. Again, CEQA does not, in this appeal point, the appellant proposes that the city adopt additional mitigation measures. CEQA does not require every imaginable feasible mitigation measure to be adopted. City has an adopted cap, which was used to evaluate significance of the project-level GHG emissions within the city limit. Therefore, the project would result in less than significance GHG emissions impacts and no nexus for mitigation measures are found. Appeal point number five and six, the appellant contends that future will face elevated, that future tenants and employees will face elevated cancer risks from indoor formaldehyde emission. Applicable guidelines do not require analysis of indoor air quality. The building materials are required to reduce exposure to toxic substances through compliance with applicable federal and state regulations, and the project is required to comply with Building Code requirements for composite wood products as outlined by the California Air Resources Board's air toxic control measure. Appeal point number seven, the appellant contends that the proposed project would result in a significant impact on biological resources. The proposed project would implement several mitigation measures to ensure construction does not have direct impact species which may be present within the project site. The project would mitigate impacts to non-critical habitat present onsite within a mitigation Appeal point number eight, the appellant contends that the EIR failed to properly analyze scientific database records and mischaracterize the project's current environmental setting and that the draft EIR was, and the database reviewed inadequately informed by a literature review. The EIR analyzed the project using methods commonly used for development projects pursuant to CEQA. The biological technical report prepared for the project accurately characterizes the site as non-native grassland, disturbed habitat, and disturbed coastal sage scrub. Plantings within a highly, siding within a highly urbanized area which provides minimal habitat value for species status or common wildlife species, species of special status or common wildlife species. The biological technical report preparation followed industry standard approaches in support of the project's EIR. Appeal point number nine, the appellant claims the EIR failed to adequately address the project's impact on habitat loss and habitat fragmentation. The appellant's prediction of the number of species present at the project site is based on data from wildlife surveys conducted in an area of the state with very little to no urban development. Therefore, the modeling is not credible. The project would result in a loss, a permanent loss of vegetation communities, which would be mitigated to a level of less than significance through the purchase of credits at a mitigation Appeal point number 10 is that the appellant contends that the EIR failed to address or mitigate impact on wildlife movement. Impacts wildlife movement are fully addressed in the EIR prepared for the project. Project site provides only marginal habitat value for such movements. Appeal point number 11, the appellant asserts that the height of the buildings can injure birds due to window reflections. The proposed buildings are four and five stories high, and it's an infill project in an area that's, has dense urban development. A project in a highly urbanized part of the city, not located within a recognized mitigation corridor, and the project site is not located within a recognized mitigation corridor. The proposed project is similar to existing projects in immediate vicinity of the project site and not expected to result in window collisions. Appeal point number 11, the appellant claims that the EIR failed to address direct and cumulative impacts on wildlife mortality from traffic generated by the project. Project site is located in a highly urbanized area of the city and will utilize the existing roadway network. The project site does not function as a wildlife corridor and is surrounded by development. The appellant's assumptions are not substantiated by evidence. Appeal point number 12, the appellant claims that the EIR failed to address direct and cumulative impacts on wildlife mortality from traffic generated by, must have skipped number 11. Apologies. Let me go back to 11. Appeal point number 11 is that the appellant asserts at the height, we already went through that. Just go on to 12. The appellant claims that the EIR failed to address direct and cumulative impacts on wildlife mortality from traffic, we already went through that one. Finally, 13. The appellant claims that the biological resources cumulative impact analysis are, in the draft environmental impact report are flawed because the draft environmental impact report relies on existing plans, policies for mitigation without explaining how implementing plans and policies would offset project contribution to cumulative impacts. The project was found to have less than significant impact of mitigation incorporated on biological significance threshold of project's substantial adverse effects on species identified as candidate-sensitive or special-status species. No special-status species were found to have moderate or high potential to occur onsite. Site mainly supports non-native grassland and disturbed habitat, provides limited habitat value within a highly urbanized setting. Impacts to disturbed coastal sage, scrub, and non-native grassland would be mitigated through purchase of credits at a mitigation bank. The project's effects are considered less than significant. Project's incremental contribution to cumulative impact would not be cumulatively considerable. With that, staff recommends that the City Council adopt a resolution upholding the Planning Commission's certification of the final EIR for the project and approval of the development plan and density bonus. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions that the City Council may have.
Thank you very much. Next is testimony from the appellant, and that would be Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, also known as SAFER. So Mr. Adam Frankel.
Good evening again, members of the council. My name is Adam Frankel. I'm an attorney with Lozo Jury. I'm here on behalf of Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility or SAFE. After reviewing the EIR, SAFER concludes that it fails as an informational document and that it fails to implement all feasible mitigation measures to reduce the project's significant adverse environmental impacts. SAFER respectfully requests that you grant its appeal and deny approval of the EIR. Instead, SAFER requests that you direct the city's planning department to address the below shortcomings in a revised EIR. First, SAFER's independent biological expert, Dr. Sean Smallwood, visited the project site and reviewed the biological resources survey prepared for the EIR. Dr. Smallwood detected four special-status species living on or near the project site and concluded that the project would result in significant adverse impacts to existing biological resources. He found that the biological resources survey mischaracterized the existing environmental setting and improperly relied on a flawed database review to inform its absence determinations. He also found that the EIR failed to adequately address the project's significant impact on habitat loss, wildlife movement, and wildlife fatalities. The staff report improperly claims that the observation of a bird of conservation concern does not substantively change the impact analysis provided in the draft EIR. However, this does not accurately describe Dr. Smallwood's findings and the substantial evidence which he presented of the project's significant impacts to biological resources. In fact, Dr. Smallwood identified a species identified by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service as a bird of conservation concern, which represents a substantial adverse effect on a special-status species identified by Fish and Wildlife Service and which constitutes a significant impact under CEQA. Next, SAFER's indoor air quality expert found an excess cancer risk resulting from the use of formaldehyde and indoor building materials throughout the project. Without mitigation, off-gassing of formaldehyde will result in an excess cancer risk to future project residents of 120 per million and to future project employees of 17.7 per million. Each of these risk levels are greater than the San Diego Air Pollution Control District's health risk significance threshold. The staff report incorrectly asserts that Mr. Offerman's analysis did not account for assumed compliance with applicable building regulatory standards. However, Mr. Offerman's analysis found a significant impact by specifically assuming compliance with those regulatory requirements. The EIR must be revised to analyze, disclose, and further mitigate the significant project impacts which SAFER's independent experts have identified. We urge you to deny approval of the EIR and to direct staff to undertake the necessary efforts to prepare and recirculate a revised EIR to address these shortcomings. Thank you for considering these comments.
Thank you very much, sir. And you have 16 minutes 57.
It was 17 on the dot when he finished talking.
Okay. Glad someone was watching that. Okay, so now's the time to hear from the applicant, and that is MCRT Investments LLC. And you have up to 20 minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. Dan Niebaum of the Lightfoot Planning Group. And good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I'm representing the client, Mill Creek Residential Trust. And with me tonight is John Coletti and Brian Nord from Mill Creek, and also members, staff members from DUDAC, who will speak a little bit more on some of the certain CEQA items following my presentation. I have a brief presentation that follows up on a few things that Sergio presented tonight. And I just wanted to give a little background on, on the applicant, the developer, Mill Creek. They're a nationally-recognized multifamily developer, one of the top multifamily developers in the country. As of 2023, they're the third-largest developer and also third-largest builder of multifamily communities. They do high-quality development communities. They have a community in downtown San Diego that actually won a design award earlier this year in January. They've been working with staff, and we've been working with staff for over two years on this project and have looked at the site in detail. They're a vertically-integrated company, so they do development, construction, and management. So they've looked at a lot of the details on this project from start to finish, and they plan to be involved with it, you know, throughout the development and management and occupation of the project. This is the downtown Madera San Diego project, just to give you some imagery of what they do. They do high-quality, high-end projects, which this one is proposed as as well. You know, they're highly amenitized, and I'll show some more images on that. But Sergio touched on the location a little bit in his presentation, but again, this is the site, 7.4-acre vacant site. And this site has been, you know, severely previously disturbed by grading on the adjacent roadways, adjacent land development, and has been left unoccupied for a very long time, you know, in the corner of the city. But it's also a great site that builds out this, this node at Melrose and Oceanside Boulevard and Bobier, within the Sprinter Station node that's recognized there. But you have the Melrose Heights development, of course, to the north, and a couple of multifamily developments, the Sky Apartments, Preserve Apartments in Vista to the northeast and southwest. You also have a neighborhood nearby that we've, you know, taken into consideration in the development plan, and some other light industrial uses nearby, so it's a fairly active corridor. But it's really, you know, been improved to take advantage of the location next to the Sprinter Station with these other developments as well. And as a mixed-use development, you know, we've worked closely with staff on the design. I think you saw that before. It's a high-quality design. Again, to that location, you know, I've shown this graphic with some other mixed-use projects, but this is the Smart Growth Area Sustainable Corridors Plan that the city is working on is based on Sandeg's regional plan. You know, this site has long been identified as a Smart Growth Opportunity Area, OC 7, as it's shown on the map there. And it's also recognized in the city's Smart and Sustainable Corridors Plan. In fact, that's, this site specifically identified as one of the mixed-use sites on the Oceanside Boulevard corridor. So this really builds out a site with a mixed-use project adjacent to transit, takes advantage of that location next to transit, and it implements the city's corridors plan in detail. And it does a, an excellent job of doing that and completing this corridor. Again, Sergio talked about a few of the site development details, and I won't dwell on them, but again, it's 323 units, 33 of those are, that's 15%, 33 of those units are, can be available at the very low-income level in this project. You know, again, the development is highly amenitized, a substantial amount of landscaping throughout, and high-quality buildings and amenities throughout the project. The central building kind of contains the central amenity area with a pool and other amenities for the residents, fitness center, club room, and things of that nature. Skip through a couple here. Again, you know, looking at the architectural design of this project, this is certainly influenced by the Irving Gill architectural style, you know, has simple forms, clean lines, has archway details, has a great deal of horizontal and vertical articulation about the project. This is a view of the building number one, which contains the leasing office and the retail space on the first floor. And we'd worked with staff over a significant amount of time to get a design that, that has this commercial appearance on the first floor in this area, which is a bit of a tricky site with the grading and the location. I think we'd come up with a very high-quality design, a very high-quality project at this location. Again, some of the amenity imagery of this project. And, you know, that concludes my portion of the presentation. Vanessa Scheidel and Sarah Halterman with DUDAC are going to comment on a couple of the CEQA items that were mentioned.
The 33 units, are they inter-dispersed throughout, same quality?
Of course, they're required to be, and they'll be proportional to the number of one, two, and three-bedroom units that are throughout the project as market rate units, and that's actually presented in the, I think, in the staff reports in our D and J as well. And we'd be required to do that.
Thank you.
State density bonus law. State density bonus law. And I'll be available to answer any questions you may have later.
Good morning, or good afternoon, not good morning, good evening. My name's Vanessa Scheidel. I'm with DUDAC. I am the environmental consultant for this project, and I'm here with my colleague Sarah Halterman, who is an air quality specialist, and will be speaking on behalf of the slides. DUDAC prepared technical responses to the SAFER Appeal Letter and provided our responses to city staff on May 8, 2023. DUDAC provided additional responses to the SAFER Appeal Letter as of yesterday, June 20, 2023, which were provided to city staff for the record. Furthermore, DUDAC has provided responses to the city as of today, June 21, in response to the letter dated June 20, 2023, from Lozo and Jury representing SAFER or representing SAFER. The city's staff report and subsequent DUDAC memorandums adequately address all issues raised in the SAFER Appeal Letters. DUDAC has prepared a couple of slides here to address some specific concerns raised by SAFER, and I'll hand it over to Sarah.
Hello, I'm Sarah, and I'm the air quality and greenhouse gas specialist that put together the analysis for the project. I think Sergio did a really great job addressing our analysis of the issues that were brought by SAFER. We, during the environmental analysis process, we found no significant impacts. During construction, we did analyze health risk, and our mitigation measures were found to be feasible and able to reduce to less insignificant. And upon implementation of both mitigation measures, air quality impacts are reduced to less insignificant, no significant impacts related to greenhouse gas emissions. We are consistent with the city's climate action plan. And so just to directly address that new issue that was brought by SAFER today, I think that our memos that we provided adequately address the concerns that were brought up. But just to reiterate what we have in those memos, the issue of indoor air quality with formaldehyde, building materials are regulated by the federal and state agencies, so through the Environmental Protection Agency and through CARB. This is not an impact that we address under SEQA. There's no city guidance, there's no state SEQA guidelines, there's no CARB guidance, and there's no guidance from the San Diego Air Pollution Control District that requires analysis that they are asking for. In addition, just the analysis that the SAFER attorney is mentioning uses inaccurate and unreasonable assumptions to find their overestimated health risk. So just for example, they assume that daily formaldehyde emissions from building materials would remain constant over the entire lifetime, so they assume that formaldehyde would be admitted for 70 years at a constant rate, and we know that within two years, most of the emissions have offgassed already. They also overstate daily and long-term duration of future residents within the residential units. So they're assuming that everybody in this project will be breathing, excuse me, everyone in this project will be indoors for 24 hours a day, 52 weeks per year, and for 70 years. And finally, they use a 70-year lifetime to calculate risk when the Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment, which is the authority on health risk assessments, and that's where we get all of our guidance for, their recommended duration for lifetime risk is 30 years. So overstated across the board, we are confident that we have accurately assessed risk, we have mitigated, and there are no further potentially significant impacts. And happy answer.
Thank you. Is that it for the applicant?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll reserve the rest of our time for any rebuttal if necessary. We would just ask you to concur with my
You don't get rebuttal.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes, if a council member asks a question to you, definitely you may respond to it. All right, so this is the public hearing. This is the time for the public to speak on this issue. Do we have any advance requests to speak or people who had submitted slips?
Yes, we have two, Jimmy Knott and Sandra Martinez.
Okay. Mr. Knott?
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127, Sherri Lane. When I read this, I was having a few questions, like, what if the state or the city revised its land use to allow, under, let's say, a crisis designation, to allow for commercial or industrial to take and convert any of those properties to residential, let's say, under crisis situation? Let's say for, you know, instead of just being a commercial or industrial, those areas into this proposal could be immediately then converted to residential. Thus, those commercial aspects will become immediately residential options. That could be another one consideration for this property and all properties so designated in the city that whether the state could supersede any city that would have that power or the city itself could take and use that power to increase its housing options. So that is on to the potential doorstep. And also onsite and offsite potentials for low-income designation. But one of the key things that I had that could affect my people in my part is drainage. With the question of percolation from the off, you know, from the site itself, was there going to be retention required from any increase? Because anytime you take and put any development onto any property, unless you take and allow for the, you know, percolation to go into the soil like it is doing naturally, and it takes and increases the drainage, it could go directly, let's say, in this development into the Loma Alta Creek. That needs to be looked at. And as a council member Weiss knows very intimately, that has impacted communities down below, and he has spent hundreds of hours developing
Thank you, sir.
So I just want you to look at that.
Thank you very much. Sandra Martinez? Anyone else wishing to speak on this, please rise and stand at the other podium. Ms. Martinez?
Thank you. Hi. You know, at some point, we're going to have to ask ourselves if we want to live with nature or in a concrete jungle. You know, we can live with nature and coexist or basically just separate ourselves further from it. And this corner, I'm sure most of you are familiar with it, there's a development that went up on the northwest corner, there's one that went up on the northeast corner, we've got a gas station on the southwest corner, and now this one on the southeast corner. I live nearby there, and like I was saying earlier, I've had species in my yard that I have not seen before when the other two developments went up. So obviously, wildlife is being severely impacted. I no longer see ash-throated flycatchers. Those are like gone. I don't know where they're gone. They're gone. Yeah, I've got a few song sparrows, they're primarily gone. Never used to have those in the yard because they're not yard animals. And the species go on and on. I have a lot of cass and kingbirds. Those never used to be residential birds, but they've lost their habitat. The four species he, the attorney was referring to is the American kestrel, which is a predatory bird. It'll lose its meals, basically. Same with the red-tailed hawk. Red-tailed hawk feeds on rabbits. It doesn't feed on other birds like Cooper's hawk, so it's going to lose its rabbit's food. I saw the other day, I saw one flying across the street carrying a rabbit, and I had to drop him because it had crows on its tail, so it lost its meal to traffic. Also, Allen's hummingbirds, they are one of the few species of hummingbirds that do not migrate, so their habitat is very sensitive. And turkey vultures, of course, are, take care of, carry on. So we really need to look at what we're doing. I know this has already been approved. I know it's going to go ahead, but we as people really need to evaluate how we want to live. Do we want to live in 15-minute concrete cities? Do we want the trees that are easy to maintain going up around our developments? Or do we want native species that are actually a little more difficult to maintain and require some effort? Or do we want things that are easy and cheap? These are things that developers typically don't look at as far as the vegetation goes. They want what's cheap and considered easy to use. That's got to change. Otherwise, we're not going to have our species, and we're just going to be living in the concrete jungles. I had some other questions regarding this project in addition to the effects on nature. One was the mitigation bank credits. How, what is the mitigation bank? Is it something out in Ramona? I know that's how it's happened in other projects. Is it something out, you know, in Twalney? I mean, I don't know. So that's important because it's not something that helps us here. And then the other question I just had was, what is the definition of very low-income housing? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other residents, anyone else wishing to speak on this item? I do not see anyone rising, so I'm going to go ahead and close this part of the public hearing and go to the applicant, who still has time for rebuttal.
17 minutes.
17 minutes, Mr. Adam Frankel.
Thank you. Again, I'll try to keep this particularly brief. Definitely won't be 17 minutes. First of all, I'd just like to address the issue with the Allen's hummingbird, which was observed on the site by a biologist who conducted a survey onsite and photographed it there. Allen's hummingbird is listed by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service as a bird of conservation concern. The BCC list, according to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, quote, "identifies the migratory and nonmigratory bird species beyond those already designated as federally threatened or endangered that represent the agency's highest conservation priorities." Additional species seen on the site are turkey vulture, which is listed by the County of San Diego on its sensitive animal list, as well as red-tailed hawk and American kestrel, which are listed by the State of California as birds of prey and are subject to statutory protection under California Fish and Game Code Section 3503.5. It was stated earlier in the staff presentation that the site has limited value to those species, but those species were actually documented as being present on the site. The other issue we'd like to raise is regarding the mitigation credits. It's not clear how those mitigation credits would actually benefit or address the impacts to the species on the site, since those would presumably be directed elsewhere. Finally, on formaldehyde, I just would say that Mr. Offerman, the expert who prepared those comments, is a leading expert on the health risk impacts of indoor formaldehyde emissions. He uses scientific methodology to evaluate those impacts in accordance with regulatory guidelines. And there are, there is feasible mitigation proposed in our comments by Mr. Offerman of how to address that impact. And so the developer could, the city could impose a condition requiring the developer to use no added formaldehyde building materials, which would substantially or entirely address that impact. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, to the council. No lights. Councilmember Joyce.
Could we have an explanation of the mitigation bank and how that works?
I'll try to be brief in my response, Councilmember Joyce. So there are, to set the table, there are no active mitigation banks within the city of Oceanside. So if the developer were to purchase credits at a mitigation bank, it would be at one of the authorized mitigation banks here in the county somewhere. That's yet to be determined. Mitigation bank goes through a vetting process through various wildlife agencies, including the California Department of Fish and Wildlife and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. They sell credits based on their acreage for the types of habitat that are, that's present on those sites. A developer has the opportunity to purchase those credits at a market rate value to offset impacts that projects may have on certain types of habitat. In this case, there's going to be impacts to non-native grassland, which is basically open space and weeds. There's going to be impact to disturbed coastal sage scrub, which there's going to be a mitigation. So they'll purchase coastal sage grub mitigation at an authorized mitigation bank. I'm not sure if that answers your question, but that's a brief overview of how mitigation bank might work.
Mr. Bedera, the city is working on a mitigation bank in Oceanside, though, right?
We are working on opportunities for mitigation banks, specifically at El Corazon, but they're not active, and those opportunities aren't available yet.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask briefly what the process looks like to getting to that?
Honestly
It's not a brief
Councilmember Joyce, I'm not a, by any means, an expert or very knowledgeable in how mitigation banks are established. The bigger picture is that the city is committed to preparing the opportunity for habitat restoration at El Corazon, and at some point in time, we will meet that obligation. That's part of the specific plan for El Corazon.
So that we can keep it here in the city versus it going somewhere else?
Right, that's exactly kind of why I bring it up. I am disappointed that the mitigation isn't going to take place here in our city. I think that's something that we should prioritize as high as we can. I know we have a ton of general plan updates that we're doing, and there's a lot of work, but again, this kind of brings up the need for more staffing within the climate action space of our city. A climate action committee could even take up some of this work overseeing our climate action plan and how it's being implemented with new developments, which we have many, and also along the process of general plan update. So I'm just planting a flag again that we have a ton of work to do in this space, and it would be really great if we had more hands doing it. Is there any response to non-permeable surfaces that were brought up by Mr. Knott about how that's mitigated?
So to answer the question briefly, Councilmember Joyce, the project is required to prepare a stormwater quality management plan. A conceptual stormwater quality management plan's been prepared that would, the release of stormwater off the site would be the same after development as it is currently. So there's design features that are part of the project, like catch basins, underwater retention systems to help water percolate into the ground, so that's been fully addressed and vetted by our engineering division.
Okay, thank you. Question for the applicant. Could you describe the affordable housing units that are contained within the proposed We had a question about very low income. Are all of the units very low income or some of them?
Yes.
No, thank you, Councilmember Joyce. Dan Niebaum again with Lightfoot Planning Group. I may have my client speak if I can't provide enough detail, but the design of the units will be similar to the market rate units, and, you know, they're required, you know, the interior materials may not be exactly the same, but as in any of these density bonus projects and affordable units. But they will be integrated throughout the project, throughout the six buildings. They can't be clustered in one building. There's 15, or there's 33 units, 15%. All those 33 units will be available at the very low-income level, and that's based on, you know, the average median income factor and that long formula and the long sheet that, I couldn't tell you the exact number right now, but it's a significant reduction in the rent. But they're all at the very low-income level, so it's not a mixture.
That's good, because a lot of times, we see a mixture of moderate or low and very low. This is all 15% of very low, so I think that's a really significant contribution to our affordable housing needs in the city, so I appreciate that. Thank you for the description.
Thank you. Thank you.
I do not have any other further questions.
Any, any, my name is.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution. Hold on. I'm trying to push it to the patient.
Okay, there's a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
There's a second. Any other comments? All right. The, the part that does impress me about this project are the low, very low affordable housing units that, that will be made available, 34 of them, excuse me, 33 of them. Oh, I was trying to make it more, one more, huh? I did have a question, though, in terms of making it easier to get people from the Sprinter Station to the site, because the pictures don't really show the, the topography of that area, right? It's kind of, the last, the last project that came before us was going to be like a shopping center and it was a very difficult, there was no real integration of the Sprinter Station and the shopping center. They would have to walk like across and then down and then over. And so is, have you made it easier for people to be able to travel to and from the Sprinter Station?
Well, that's an excellent question and it's, it's something that we had looked at from the very beginning of this. It's a challenging sight.
Yes, that is a challenge, right?
The, the grading along Melrose frontage is almost 30 foot differential from the Melrose pavement. And so in order to get the, the unit count that, you know, is required for this project, it's very difficult to deal with that edge. We have some larger tanning walls there. That's one of the waivers for the project. As we, we haven't asked that, looked at, well, did you do a connection down there, some stairs or something? Well, you have the bike path down at the bottom of that, too. So anything that would come off that side of the project, have to cross the bike path, get to the sidewalk. So we looked at that, but there's not a reasonable solution to that. So the access to this project, I think, is the vastly improved frontage along Beauviera and to the Melrose Corner, but residents would exit the building or exit the property at the entry if you were walking, walk down the Melrose frontage and cross at the, the safe pedestrian crosswalk at Melrose and Oceanside Boulevard. There's no other crosswalks or safe crosswalks we could build. We looked at the back end of the project possibly due to that, but then there, you're, introducing a crosswalk where one really can't exist to get over to the station. So you would cross at the existing crosswalk at Melrose. I think that's a safer place to do that. And again, the frontage will be vastly improved and landscaped along that, that frontage, you know, a little different than a, a commercial shopping center where the buildings would have been further back on the site.
Right, no, I remember the shopping center was kind of a mess, right? You remember it, too?
All the time ago.
Yes, well, a few years ago, yes. Thank you. And staff, were you able to come up with any ideas about making it more easier to travel or to and from the Sprinter Station?
Mayor Sanchez, early on in the discussions with the applicant, that's one of the first comments we made, we also understood the challenges that the site has topographically.
Yeah.
If they were to provide, if they were, if all things are equal, if they were to provide a pedestrian access along the Melrose frontage, as an example, they'd have to lean that, that grading back so much to provide ADA compliant path of travel that it would, it would cut into the available area to build housing units and it becomes infeasible at that point.
Right.
And so the limitations of the site are what they are and there is, there is an additional, unfortunately, there is an additional pedestrian access opportunities along that particular frontage. We're kind of left with just the main project entry and the sidewalk that they're going to develop along that frontage.
Right, thank you. All right, there's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Back to item number 40, where we were talking, we were getting to, I think, the third person.
Robert Espinosa.
Mr. Espinosa?
I'm outside.
Okay, Shelley Parker. Yeah, come on forward so you can speak right after, Shelley.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Shelley, for getting up faster.
Yeah, no, hit my knees. Okay, good evening, Mayor, City Council members, Shelley Parker, Rancho San Luis Rey. It is become, I've become aware that the Manufactured Fair Practices Housing Commission is not going to meet until sometime in the fall. I wanted everybody to be aware of that. I understand how volunteering on a commission is, can be difficult, but this is a community. We have 15 mobile home parks. It is our avenue to speak to the city and to bring the problems that we live with and the challenges and also the good things to the, so that everybody knows what goes on. And I believe that it is very important that that commission meet on a regular basis. We have had some.
It used to.
Yes, I know it used to.
Right.
And for some reason, unfortunately, there was a comment made by one of the commissioners that, you know, they were hoping that we would quit speaking about the problems that were going on. And I just want to encourage that commission to continue to meet on a regular basis, even if it was every other month, if there was, they may not think that there's something going on, but there always is and it is very important. And I would also like to state, I know that 16B has requirements about who can sit on the commission, but I also know that there are other housing, Manufactured Fair Practice boards that have people on them that live in mobile home parks and a park owner on it, non-voting members that could help to educate the commissioners as to what is happening and how life in a mobile home park works. So thank you very much for listening and I would like to, I will be saying this at, at other meetings, but I can't say it at the Manufactured Fair Practices Commission meeting because they're not having it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Espinosa.
Hi, thank you for having me.
Followed by Sandy Beal.
Council and community. My name is Robert Espinosa, most of you guys know. I've been coming here for seven years. Granddaughter's, wait, I see a bunch of new faces. The same problem is still quite fun, you know, because my granddaughter was born in, people say a quest, fact. She was born in that neighborhood, was poverty, the first street, but, you know, one of the main, was when you, when, when these kids growing up, they ask, Mom, can I have salmon? No. Or can I have some, you know, beef and potatoes? I know you could have, no, that's the way they brought up. Half the new people have never experienced.
You want to put this closer to your mouth?
Sorry. They experience that kind of life. So there's things that we can do, there's solutions that we can, you guys can do, we can do as a community. We don't want Michelle Tates, the Libby Lakes kids that got passed away, even the, even the Navy veteran got shot, killed, my granddaughter. It could have been preventable if, if we put our heads together, you know, go forward and give these kids a chance. These kids are, you know, they don't have means to go to school and all that, all that. When you give them, when you give them a opportunity to go to school, they'll take advantage of it and go learn. They're privileged, they're forced to go to school and they don't learn. So we need more programs, like the, like the park we were talking about. One of the main sports is going up is that pickleball. It's a growing sport in the United States and the world. So you can't put just a little bit of pickleball in there for the future. Just put, since it's a growing sport, let's make a bunch of those pickleball courts. This is getting so common. I meant, you know, I noticed that the people with the pickleball and the tennis, they don't get along. So they need their own little space, you know? Pickleball for anybody can, anybody can play, little kids to grandparents like myself, you know? We need programs like that. We also need buildings to take the kids up. Too much time in their hands, it's not, you know, education. There's people that come out of that neighborhood, like Junior, Esther, and other good people that came out of there, if you give them a chance, you know? Well, that's all I have to say. You'll see me again.
Thank you, Mr. Espinosa.
Thank you very much for your time. Bye-bye.
Ms. Beal, followed by Jimmy Knott, followed by Sandra Martinez.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sanchez and City Council members. My name is Sandy Beal and I live in Rancho San Luis Rey Mobile Home Park, where I am the homeowners president and also the City of Oceanside Park representative. The Manufactured Home Fair Practices Commission is supposed to meet the first Thursday of each month, and that's the only place mobile homeowners can bring their concerns regarding rent control. Sadly, this commission only meets about two to three times a year. This year, Rancho San Luis Rey did pass our health and safety inspection, but there were several parks that did not pass. In 2021 and 2022, when Rancho San Luis Rey did not pass our inspection, our management, our management company went ahead and started charging homeowners a permissive rent increase on July 1. Since Rancho San Luis Rey is a very active park, we immediately contacted the City of Oceanside to tell them that we were being charged the rent increase before the park even passed the inspection. I'm very concerned that there are many homeowners in other parks that go ahead and pay that permissive renting increase, even if the park has not passed their inspection. How does the City of Oceanside know if management companies or park owners have been charging mobile homeowners the permissive rent increase when the park has not passed or even if the park never passes? This should be something that the Manufactured Home Fair Practices Commission knows or possibly Jackie Bickford, the person who's been dedicated to work with the mobile home parks. Sadly, many mobile homeowners are senior citizens, disabled, or low income. They're too afraid to speak up. These people deserve to have their parks in good condition and pass the annual health and safety inspection. This is not something they should have to worry about or ask for. The City of Oceanside should be following up with management companies or park owners, be sure they're doing the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Knott, followed by Sandra Martinez, followed by Amber Newman.
You can get anything you want at Alice's Restaurant.
Blast from the past.
Well, you probably of a certain age recognize that tune. Alice's Restaurant for Al or Guthrie. And I could very simply point to this. This is a public notice here that you, the public in Oceanside, have a final chance to tell the San Diego County Water Authority what you want them to know about their 8.2 to 9.5 increase on the water rates. Tomorrow, 9:00 a.m., they take all the public comments first on their agenda, unlike us or others. So you have one chance. This is your chance. Otherwise, like in Alice's Restaurant, if you have one person, like me, they're very going to say, well, it's just Jimmy. He's nuts. If you have three or more, you have a movement. I need a movement out there if you want to take and get your lower water rates. If you don't, well, that's your own damn fault. You didn't call. You didn't pay attention. You need to help to get to it. Another thing is to let you know, it was being reported to me that down near where I live, on Little Bond Creek, down on Coast Highway there, at the former Morocco property, the homeless have decided to reestablish their camps. So I've decided, well, you guys need to know. Next thing, Esther, very simply, I saw a movie this week. The movie is called, Don't Tell Anybody, Teenage Kraken. Guess what city it is placed in? Oceanside. Yep, and the harbor in that movie, it's a kid's movie, is, looks a lot like our harbor. Hmm, I would take and maybe tell everybody, and I can't tell you anything because I was told not to tell anyone anything. I'll tell you, Esther. It's good to have that publicity, but it seemed like 100 times in that movie, they mentioned Oceanside. And I think that that's something that we should take and look at. And that's a teenage kraken movie. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Sandra Martinez, followed by Amber Newman, followed by Susan Custer.
I was told today that my sister-in-law got diagnosed with breast cancer. So me being the person I am, I decided I was going to do a bunch of research on it. Now she's 43 years old, so pretty young, though people do get breast cancer at that age, right? But I decided to do some research and unfortunately, I don't know if it's my glasses or if it's blurry, but what I've got.
I think it's blurry.
This is right off of the American Cancer Society website. The chart on the left is 2019 statistics and I checked 2020 and 2021 are all very similar. And then the, the one on the right that's circled in pink in honor of breast cancer awareness is 2022. If you pan out just a smidge for me, you can see it's, it's the estimated number of new cases for all the four major cancer groups. And if you look at what's circled, you can see how the numbers on the left are considerably lower than the numbers on the right. So for breast cancer, between 2019, 20, and 21, there's about 26,000 in the younger people. And it's more significant in younger people because younger people typically don't get cancer. So you expect that number to be lower and steady. But then all of a sudden in 2022, grew up to 47,000, from 26,000 to 47,000 in younger women. So what has possibly changed? I mean, could it be a genetic modifying injection that a lot of people took? It's all the cancers, all the four major cancers across the board have gone up significantly in younger people. Now, most people that are younger didn't get their injection until later 2021, when they were mandated by their companies or coerced or whatever you want to call it, they were threatened to lose their job unless they got the shot. And this is what the long-term implications are. It's still going on, the shot's still being pushed. You guys really need to step up to the plate and not support this injection. I want to share a letter. This is a letter that went out to every M.D. from the Surgeon General, and I can tell you, the Surgeon General does not send out letters to M.D.s normally. But it's basically a giant piece of propaganda telling everybody to vaccinate their patients with the COVID shot. I got this about two weeks ago. So they're still pushing this crap. You guys, you really need to step up and stop it. Do not support this anymore. We know people in the city got injured by it. Lot of people have passed away and a lot of people have been injured and the cancer rates are skyrocketing.
Thank you.
I just want to say, we're very sorry to hear about your sister and wish her the best in her treatment.
Amber Newman, followed by Susan Custer.
Hi, Amber Newman. I'm here to talk about decorum, basically behavior in keeping with good taste and propriety. It's not an official policy, but it used to be standard practice in this chamber. It's been very lacking the last couple of years with the last. with the last council meeting being one of the worst examples I've seen in a long time. One speaker being exceptionally egregious in lobbying the personal insults, calling our council members fools and idiots. Shaming one as being un-Christian for daring to broach the subject of cannabis regulation the Oceanside voters asked seven years ago and are still waiting for action on. Actually labeling another as a traitor for daring to wear a purple shirt at last year's Independence Day parade, when pictures actually show from that event that he was wearing red, white, and blue. Now, certainly, we can disagree with our electeds. We expect it. They expect it. But there's a difference between saying that we think that they are making foolish decisions and actually calling them fools. One is a professional critique, and the other is a personal attack. The words that were chosen and the manner in which they were spoken did not come from concerned citizens. They came from bullies. And the only thing worse than a bully are people in authority who let their bad behavior slide. And this is where it comes back to you, Mayor Sanchez. Years of sitting through these council meetings show that if you had been the one being called such foul insults, points of order would have been flying through this room faster than I could say the word objection. But because the abuse was directed at others, you sat here and said nothing. For three minutes, you allowed your colleagues to be berated and degraded, not professionally, but personally. And when the deputy mayor finally stepped up to do your job, he was not only rebuffed by the speaker who continued his verbal assault, he received no support from the chair, you, the person who is supposed to set the example. You had an opportunity to provide guidance, support, and direction. You had an opportunity to lead. You not only failed miserably, but you owe all of these people an apology, and you need to do better. Thank you.
Susan Custer, followed by Patty.
Good evening. First, I'd like to make it abundantly clear that I support all adults in their chosen lifestyle, and I'm sure 99% of the people in the city do as well. So why does the city feel it necessary to issue a proclamation to celebrate LGBTQAI? And when thinking about this, I decided to do research, to research the meaning of the new pride flag, known as the Progress Pride Flag. This is the flag displayed in our downtown city library in the teen section. Major additions to this flag are the colors pink, blue, and white, pink for girls, and blue for boys, and the color white represents people who are transitioning. Why is the city promoting this to children by placing it in the teen section of the library? I would like to read a few quotes from parents who have lost their children to the trans movement. These are from a substack called Parents with Inconvenient Truths About Trans. First quote, "I am a straight, white, suburban woman in my 50s. You can call me Karen, but my tattoos would disagree. You can call me a bigot, too. And only feminists, as far as equal pay, the right to vote, to have a bank account, and a credit card. You know, basic civil rights, the same things gays and lesbians wanted and received." So the movement that started out sane got overrun, end quote. Any of us who have children can relate to the absolute anguish that parents feel, the feeling of anguish that is with you every minute of every day. As one mother from the substack said, "Living on a tightrope is terrifying and exhausting. I have thought about suicide. The spare ebbs and flows through my days like fog. Some days, it's a crushing darkness, and it is difficult to function at all," end quotes. These parents need a proclamation. As their heart breaks, they need to know the city cares. If we cannot have a proclamation for these parents, let's at least have one for all the people and use the most intrusive flag, the American flag. And if we choose to display an American flag to children in the teen section of the library, let's at least make it a truly inclusive flag, the American flag, which is inclusive of all Americans regardless of their sexual preference. Let's take down the Progressive Pride Flag with the color white, which stands for trans. Stop promoting this to children. The ultimate outcome of the trans movement is the mutilation of children. One last quote from another mother, "I think about suicide sometimes."
Thank you.
Taking me away. Will you only understand this when damage is being done to your own families?
Thank you. Patty K.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. A few meetings ago, we asked the Council what Oceanside's plan for the illegal immigration crisis after the Title 42 was lifted. So far, I haven't, we haven't heard anything, and I hope that's in the works. And before you adjut to the terms illegal, Eric, and crisis, are you aware of the 85,000 missing migrant children who have come across the border illegally in the first two years of this administration? Even the director of the Office of Refugee Resettlement said they need Congress's help to address this problem. And the White House Press Secretary said this is a situation unacceptable. It's believed that these children are being used in child labor, 85,000, and/or in sex trafficking. Before you deny any of this, we invite you to the movie. It's in the downtown Oceanside Regal, July 3rd through the 6th, called The Sound of Freedom. We offer each one of you on the Council a free ticket. See me afterwards. Be glad to give it to you. And then we can have, thank you, Jim, then we can have a more worthwhile discussion on this, on this crisis. As a follow-up, Joseph Travers, he's a local man that has a group of retired officers, military, and Navy SEALs, who works in San Diego County that I know of and lives in, was living in Oceanside. And they will, he will be talking on this issue at the pit stop on August 7th at 6:00 p.m. So that's a good follow-up to the movie. And then we can have, you know, a better discussion about it. The movie exists to spread awareness and spur action among the audiences. The film illustrates how child trafficking impacts millions of families and seeks to encourage more conversation about acting proactively to try and curb this. Thank you.
Thank you. Arlene Hamerschmidt, followed by Bob Klutz, followed by Wilson Godney.
Good evening, Council. Apologies for my name error.
Yeah, I wondered if you changed your last name.
You know what I'm talking--
So you can make it harder for us to pronounce it.
I'm sorry?
I wondered if you changed your last name so it'd make it harder for us to pronounce it.
I'm sticking right in here. Arlene Hamerschmidt, ruralish Fire Mountain. Happy summer, everybody. It is officially here. This is primarily regarding the Third Party Consultant's Report of Findings and Recommendations Regarding the Formal Complaint About Parks and Recreation Issues. I request sincerely that you study it, not peruse it, study it. It's available to public, and I officially, right now, request that it be put on the Parks and Recreation website page. Easily accessible. So the third-party consultant was unable to follow all the leads given in the interviews. I believe his, was limited by the scope of his contract. It is a quality unbiased report, but it is incomplete. Names of Parks and Recreation staff who allocated questionable permits submitted to the third-party investigating consultant were not interviewed. I gave him those names myself, from the names on the permits that were questionable. When interviewed by the consultant, that's what I said already. Why weren't they? Why was he not able to follow all of his leads? It's easy to accomplish, the easy-to-accomplish recommendations that he gave have already begun. However, removing one person from allocating permits won't solve public distrust-- wow-- of established Parks and Rec culture and administration. These were the powerful findings. Coastal Academy was incorrectly classified as an all-U.S.D. school, and the public's perception of Coastal's gift of bleachers as unethical is a reasonable conclusion, and it's not a good ethical look for the city. Additionally, I have a suggestion for ways to improve trust in the city. I will give this to the city clerk. Replace the consultant city staff dog and pony shows that public does not trust, and that's what public has started to call these presentations, with public approval of the last plan that goes directly to City Council for a vote.
Thank you, Ms. Hamerschmidt.
Because of all of those reasons, which I will give to the clerk.
Thank you. Bob Klutz? Do you leave?
Bob, yeah, he's somebody that I invited over.
He left?
He's actually from Carlsbad, but he had to leave, and same--
Okay, thank you. So next is, Wilson, you, Godney.
Yes. Hi, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'm Wilson Godney. I'm a member of the Parks and Rec Commission, and I'm the chairman for the Standing Committee. And I just wanted to catch you guys before you go on your well-deserved month-long break from being up there. I was in attendance at your last council meeting in pretty, pretty bad. So anyways, I wanted to show you two different copies. Well, this, this one right there, the first one, was the, from the, the February 2nd workshop at El Corazon, and we had a record number of people that attended that workshop regarding Park 1. And when we left, we, we kind of did a little bit of work on that one, but we all went with that one, the promenade design. And then, this second one here is from the June 8th commission meeting that, where Kim Corbin, the engineer, and the consultants came to us, and this is what it looks like now. So we don't know what happened other than a survey that, that might have been done after or between our workshop and the, the presentation that they made to us. As far as I'm understanding, that this is not a final, but I really would like us to revisit this, this whole issue with these online surveys because, as Kim had mentioned earlier in that presentation, that online surveys can be manipulated. So whether we do a, one more workshop where everybody shows up, they need to show up for, for that, for their vote to count. And so hopefully, I can convince you guys to hold off on, put a pause on this, finalizing this, this design because they moved this pump track where it was way over there on the left, and now where it is on this one. It, it just caused a whole different movement of the pickleball courts, where the design of those pickleball courts is, it just doesn't make sense to pickleball players. And even to where like they, they wanted to put one multi-use tennis court that can turn into four pickleball courts. And as Robert said earlier, it, they don't mix. So Bob from Carlsbad, they said that they don't have multi-use courts there. Milo from Vista said they don't have multi-use courts there either.
Thank you.
So just to let you know, hopefully, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Milo Vukovich?
Milo is my friend from Vista.
He's not here?
No.
Okay. Joe Naylor, followed by Alan Bergman.
Well, I ain't gonna take too long, Miss Ernest Sanchez, Mayor, Councilman. But I haven't seen no change, really, you know, for park recreation. I've seen things different. I was raised here since 1963. I'm a member of Oceanside High School, America's College. You probably know that. I don't understand it right now. I just don't understand what's, how come the workshop he was saying, wouldn't they, Wayne, Wilson, they're not here? Wayne's not here, but you know, leave that alone. I just, I haven't seen no changes at all. So I hope to do better when things come, you know, what they asked for, and what I asked for, too. So wherever I can be happy, so all the recreation be good. I don't know about the, they have all the recreation, but I don't know if they're having a lot of security. And I don't know about all that right now. So I'm just gonna call it, I'm kind of tired because it's been a long meeting here, so. But thank you anyway. So, and Councilmen, you guys, too, right? God bless.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm Alan Bergman. I'm the co-chair of the Entertainment Division at Disney, and we have a special announcement to make today. As you know, Disney's a place of magic. It's where frogs turn into princes, where orphans like Cinderella can transform into beautiful princesses. And unlike us jaded adults, the children believe in magic. And we spent 100 years cultivating a brand that has been trusted and loved by families for generations. And with that trust, we've covertly been inserting queerness into our films and television shows, first as LGBTQ background characters, and later in leading roles and plot points. And few parents know that two years ago now for Pride Month, on Disney Plus, our streaming service, we streamed the Disney Plus Drag Queen Extravaganza to help introduce queer ideologies and sexualities to the children and encourage them to experiment on their own. And we're proud of our perfect D E I score, our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion score, but we always strive to go above and beyond what is expected. And so we're proud to announce that this summer we're going to be opening Disney-themed pediatric transgender clinics for the children across the country. As you know, it's still a tremendous stigma against parents deciding to change the gender of their children, especially for those raising their children as gender non-binary and using they/them pronouns. And so we're confident that with our Disney brand puberty blockers and our character-themed clinics, that we can help reduce this stigma, and we can normalize these ideas, and we can make them mainstream. Other brands like Bud Light, Gillette, and Pantene have helped pave this path, and we're proud to take the lead and bring us into the New World Order. We want to thank Governor Gavin Newsom, President Joe Biden, Assistant Health Secretary Rachel Levine, an incredible woman. I noticed I didn't say transgender woman. She's a real woman, and it's about time that we stop making these divisive distinctions when talking about her and others. So every patient will receive a free season pass to any Disney theme park. And just for coming in for a consultation, you'll get a free six-month subscription to our Disney Plus streaming service. So bring the kids on in. We look forward to taking care of them, and we just want to appreciate everybody's support. We know that this will be a tremendous success. And I have a little bit of time here. I'm available for any questions? Questions? Appreciate the unanimous support. We'll be seeing you soon.
All right. So that is the end of the public. Item's not on the agenda. So we're on to general council member comments. Councilmember Joyce.
As you just heard, the First Amendment is broad and a strong piece of our governing documents of our, our country. So I just, we had concerns tonight about somebody stepping in and jumping in when somebody was called a name. was called a name or two. I just want to assure everyone that we adhere to preserving the First Amendment right of our speakers, and that sometimes that requires us to take things that not everybody else takes as names, but that's okay, because we're here to do the work.
Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you. On the same vein, I just, and I should have probably said something right after Amber Newman spoke. A lot of times, we have disagreements up here and, and all those kind of things, and I appreciate Ms. Newman talking about decorum, because I do agree with that. But in all fairness too, I have to, I have to say that when those comments were made, the mayor did look over to me and ask me if I wanted to point a personal privilege so that I could respond, and I chose not to, because I didn't feel I would do much good to speak up at that point. So we're going away for a month, and I have one request for staff. We're going to be gone for a whole month--
Don't call us?
There is a squeaky seat back there that's driving me crazy, and if we could have somebody fix that thing before we come back in August, it would be a great personal favor. Thank you very much. Have a great month.
Thank you. And, well, the comments were addressed to me. I have to say that I've had a lifetime of dealing with folks who have occasionally said negative things towards me, towards people that I know, that I care a lot about. And I am a very strong supporter of the Constitution and of the First Amendment, freedom of speech. We do adhere to that here, but, you know, I would hope that we all really care about, as well as I and all of us here, really care about Oceanside and all of Oceanside, including people who we don't necessarily agree with. I mean, that has always been my hope, that whether or not we agree all the time is not the issue. Maybe there is something there that we can agree on and work together, because we're all here to make Oceanside a better community. And that was a theme for, is a theme for Parks and Rec Month, July, is a community, right? Better community. Coming up, hopefully Saturday, we'll all enjoy the Freedom Days Parade this Saturday downtown. Thank you, Main Street Oceanside, for just, you know, bringing this over and over and over again. I don't know how many years it's been, a ton. I know I was really sad when we lost the Christmas parade. How many of you all remember the Christmas parade here? We had a phenomenal Christmas parade, right? But this one is especially, especially important for us. It's about celebrating our heroes, celebrating not only the U.S. birthday, but also our own city's birthday, July 3, 1888. So speaking of July 3, fireworks at El Corazon, and, and I would like to close in memory of Andrea Sanders, a very close friend to several of us here on the dais. And Andrea was a blessed addition to Andrew and Gwen Sanders' family. She was the second child and the only daughter. She was born on December 2, 1970, and she left us on June 6, 2023. Andrea, in 1977, Andrea and her family moved from Imperial Valley to Oceanside, because that's where her mom was transferred for her job. Andrea and her family lived in the Vista School District. She graduated from Vista High, also attended Mary Costa College. She was crowned Miss Juneteenth in 1988. Andrea has one son, Zachary, but she also helped raise three others, Tracy Jr., Josh, and Darius. She's a great mom, and when the boys were playing sports, she worked the snack bar. She was also always doing fundraising to help the boys with North County Jaguars, so that they can make it to the Junior Olympics in Orlando, Florida. Zachary entered in track and field and won a gold medal. Andrea's work career was with HD Supply and TEG Insurance. Andrea will always be remembered as a community activist and the very best friend a person could ever have. So please stand as we close this meeting, and we will be adjourning until 3:30 on Wednesday, August 9. You all get a nice break from us. So thank you very much. Moment of silence. Good evening.